Pledge of Allegiance. Alden, are we on the air?
Yeah.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we have a pretty full agenda tonight. We had, we have Ben Smith here who's a planner that we're going to talk to about what planning services might look like for the town of Durham. We had originally bumped him up in the agenda because he had another meeting, but he's now saying he doesn't have that. So I'm going to move the public comment section back to its normal spot after number four. Any other amendments to the agenda?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Then we will proceed with the public comment section. If anybody who has public comments about any issues, please come up to the table here so we can pick you up on the microphone.
Okay. My name is Mike Rio.
Go ahead and have a seat.
Oh, okay. Sure. And I live on Country Lane. And I went around getting petitions signed to see if we can get our road reconstructed as well as repaved. The last time that it was paved was around 30 years ago, okay? And there has not been a lot of maintenance conducted since, okay? Cedar Pond Road was recently repaved, you know? And if you look at it from a home density point of view, there's like 12.5 homes per mile on Cedar Pond Road and about 32.5 miles, I mean, homes per mile on Country Lane. So what we would like to see done is the, like, the road fixed as well as repaved. The southwest pin on my land is just about in the middle of the road. And so it wasn't done right, you know, to begin with, you know? So we would like to see that fixed too as well, you know? So this is a list of all those who signed and...
Is it everyone on the street?
Every house that I went to who was there did sign it. There were three homes that I went to that they weren't there, that's why. But other than that, then yes. Yep. Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah. My name is Joe Crowley and I live on Country Lane. And I was there when they started the whole project. And right from the beginning, we had problems with the person that was selling, Hildebrandt. And with the piece of land that we sold to Hildebrandt, we bought from Hildebrandt, was supposed to go for paying the road. Well, he didn't pay Larrabee and they fought for all that. But it was like way from the very beginning, they had a stone wall that went through part of it and they really didn't do a very good job. There was supposed to be a turnaround right at the end for the school buses. And they felt really bad for Mr. Hildebrandt and they said, "Well, he's tiring the road, that's enough." Well, the requirement and the ordinances called for tiring the road. And the town didn't want to push Hildebrandt right from the beginning. So they went out and they got a contractor and they did a lousy job, to put it mildly, okay? And then we finally got them because they had to tire the road. So Hildebrandt had to tire the road in order to sell the other pieces of property. So they ended up tiring the road and doing a very poor job doing it. And then about 15, maybe 15 years later, or maybe 20, they tired Cedar Pond Road. And they did a fairly good job, but they had to fix it. And they've done a great job and they've fixed that all up. Well, if it's just a few houses going by on Cedar Pond Road, when you come to our house, it's really terrible. I mean, I don't know what the road commissioner's plan was, but he must be tired of hearing us, from us and stuff like that because the road is a wreck. It's falling apart completely.
Yep.
Okay? And that's why we're here. All we want's a road that, you know, without potholes and stuff, with rocks coming up in the middle of the road. We just want a serviceable road.
Yep. Understood. Where we are, there's, believe me, unfortunately, Country Lane is not the only road that's in this type of situation. There's a pretty significant backlog, somewhere between eight and nine miles of roads in town that need a complete rebuild. And that's not including just the annual, you know, two to four miles of maintenance work that needs to be done to keep roads from getting into the condition that the Country Lane is in. So what we've been saying to other people that have raised similar concerns is that, you know, we've asked the road commissioner to put together a long-term plan for, that prioritizes the roads that are in the worst shape and need work done sooner rather than later. And what our plan is, is to come to the town at town meeting in April and with a few options. And really, it's a, the options will break down to how much do you want to spend, how soon is the town? Like, how much of a horizon do we need to spread the work over relative to the amount of money to spend, you know? Because, I mean, it's probably unlikely that we can, that the town would be interested in paying for all of that in one year. So are we looking at a two-year plan, a three-year plan, a four-year plan? So our plan is to bring some of those options to the town and say, "Well, this is what it's going to look like," you know? And if we did, you know, Plan C, you know, in year one, you'd be looking at these roads, year two, these roads, year three, these roads, and this is how much you could expect it would cost in your property taxes. So we're, we don't have that work completed yet, but certainly, certainly we're aware that Country Lane is one of the, is one of the poorer roads in town right now. So I know that's, I don't know if that's, you know, the answer you were expecting or whatever, but there's no mechanism where a petition is going to have the board say, you know, that we're going to bump this road to the front of the line, or that we're going to, you know, do it, you know, this spring when, if we, you know? It has to be done as part of a comprehensive road improvement plan.
So when should we see that plan?
We'll be presenting, well, we'll be presenting it to the town at town meeting in April. And like most documents, typically available a few weeks before the actual town meeting. And all the selectmen meetings where, you know, where we have the road commissioner here, you know, discussing that, and as a board, I'm sure we'll be talking about, you know, different options and priorities. Because it's not just whose pavement is in the worst shape, there's other considerations like, is the road a major throughway through town? You know, how many people live on the road? You know, there are some other considerations there too that we have to balance, so...
Like how many years we've been waiting or...
Yeah, that's probably a factor too. Unfortunately, the reality is that as a town, we have not done the work on the roads that we should have been doing over the last really 20 years. And so now, you know, this generation of people that's living here now, we're kind of, we're kind of holding the bag on that. And so we got to figure out how we're going to get through that work as quickly as we can at a pace that taxpayers can absorb. You know, that's, because there's only so much, only so much we can spend, right? With, I mean, without taxing people right out of town, so...
So why was the blacktop ripped out of Cedar Pond Road?
I'm sorry?
They had blacktop down, they ripped it up, wouldn't do blacktop down, did all of a sudden, they put stone down, it was dust all over the place, and then they came back and we did it again.
Yep. The...
Did we get stuck with that bill with the second torn?
Well, that's part of the chip seal process. That's part of, you know, not, the way paving of roads work, it's not just we come through and put a layer of hottop down, you know? There are different processes. One process is a cold mix, which has a little bit more elasticity and longer life and can, it can't take a lot of high traffic from heavy vehicles, like, we would never be able to do that on like Route 9 or 136. But on a road like Cedar Pond, that's a good application for that. Chip seal is a process where they actually intentionally, you know, put the sand down or the rock down and you drive over it for several days and then they come back through and kind of, you know, pick up the loose stuff that's left.
It was nice, the blacktop, when they put it down.
Yeah.
And like you said, a few days later, I notice it was all gone.
That's...
And they put the dust, it was dust all over the place.
Yeah. That's kind of like the undercoat, if you will, was that first layer of hottop, so...
Is there any chance we can have that kind of stone road off Country Lane until we do the blacktop?
Well, there's pavement there. That's not a stone road, that's a paved road.
Oh, it isn't?
Yeah. It's just, but it's got that stone layer kind of on top of it.
It's nice that they don't make any dust now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it swept off.
Yeah, I think our frustration is coming where we see it took so long to get Cedar Pond Road done, and now they've done it twice. And then it was like we're second-class citizens where they ran out of material on the road coming into Country Lane and dumped half of it and left the other half and when you walk a little bit, you have a bump in your turn. I mean, and then they said, "Well, they ran out."
Yeah. So I know, I can tell you that, you know, one of the most difficult things that, to explain to people and that just doesn't make sense at first glance is, "Well, that road's not nearly as in bad a shape as my road is, why is that road getting paved and why is my road not?" And if you look at paving road and kind of like, you know, there's like two buckets. There's like the rebuild bucket, which is what your road sounds like it needs, and then there's the maintenance bucket. And that's where we, if we don't keep up with roads that haven't gotten deteriorated to the point that yours has, then they're going to end up like yours as well. So part of the strategy is to at least stabilize the condition of the roads that are not in rebuild status so that they don't get to rebuild status. And that's, that type of work typically comes out of just the annual budget, the, whatever money is put in for paved roads. It's, you know, three to five miles a year of repaving roads that are in okay shape, but they just need like maintenance work. Then there's a whole separate bucket of rebuilds, and those are typically bonds. Like, so that we did Rabbit and Runaround Pond Road, that was a complete rebuild and that was a bonded project. So what we're looking at, when we talk about the backlog of rebuilds and like with Country Lane, we're talking about bonding projects. So this, we're like, what's going to be the term of the bond? How much do we want to, you know, what kind of chunk do we want to take on and, you know, and what amount of time? So those are the things that we're going to be wrestling with between now and March, April. And it's a slow process, believe me. You know, I feel for you. It's the thing we hear the most about is the condition of the roads. And we didn't get in this situation overnight, and we're not going to be able to get out of it overnight either. So it's just, but we got, our commitment to the town is to come to the town with a plan and some options. And then once we, as a town, decide on it, then we'll implement that plan and we'll get it going.
Could you go one more time, just for me, the criteria for how the roads will be judged to put on a list, one to, you know, to whatever?
Well, I don't have, there's all kinds of criteria, some, not all of which I'm familiar with, but some factors are, you know, how much traffic goes on the road in a typical day? Is it a throughway for like commuters, for instance? Or is it a, how many, how many people live on the road? You know, is it a dead-end road, you know, a mile long with four houses on it? Or is it a, you know, a pretty busy road that's got houses every 300 feet, you know, that goes for miles? So those are the types of things. And then condition of the road, obviously, and those are just, you know, just some of the factors. And I'm sure there are others, you know, in terms of, that probably have, that are more, you know, technical in nature with regard to what types of roads lend themselves to different types of treatments and how those factors all balance together, but...
And in some cases, depending what the winner does to them, the priority may change. They could be moved up or they could be moved down, depends on what, you know, we're trying to, trying to balance that out as well.
Should we do this winter?
I will say, you know...
Town do their job. That's up to the road.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, you know, we, we have to, they may not be pretty and they may be bumpy and whatever, but we are, we do have to keep the roads safe for, you know, they have to be so that we can plow it and we can get emergency vehicles down there. And if we find that, that there's a condition that prevents us from doing that, then we have to do a short-term fix to fix it. That happened on Bowie Hill Road this year. There was a section of Bowie Hill Road where literally it was dangerous to put a plow down the road because of the condition of one section of the road. So we had to find the money and the budget to at least do some sort of a temporary thing there until that can be a bigger project, so...
Kevin, when the, obviously the list, we're still working on, is the thing. I, just out of curiosity, I'm pretty familiar with the road, as some of you know. If there was an option for, say, later on, maybe we can't get to Cedar, or Country Lane, excuse me, in four years, but we may be able to budget in terms of taking and regrading that road, taking the hottop that's existing there, would that be a feasible option to get?
No. Not going back to dirt road.
Okay.
We basically got a dirt road.
I know, but at least get rid of some of the bumps and not take out your axle every time you go down.
We've got Public Works now, okay? 3:30 in the afternoon, you can watch them down by the river smoking cigarettes. If they come over and they put down some coal patch, instead of just putting it down and driving it over twice with a truck, and they actually use a few tamps and a little compactor, they could make a little difference on some of it.
Sure.
But they don't do it.
Yeah. No, I hear you. It, yeah, I'm not...
They made a hell of a mess at the end of the road when my road is, and there's a hole. I took my tractor and I filled it with dirt.
Okay.
Because they don't come down there at all unless they smoke it.
Yeah. No, I only, I only ask that simply because there's, we were just in a meeting not too long ago and it was, it was up for discussion and some of the towns were offering that just to, just not necessarily to band-aid the situation, but just to make a living.
No, we're not going to dust hole we had. Cedar Pond Road is bad enough with dirt.
Like I said, for a temporary...
It keeps the dust down.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I have an issue I've been complaining for probably 15 years now. Because they put the road over Mr. Rio's property post, okay? It needed more of a 90-degree turn. So every time anybody goes down past my house, they go off the road to the point where there's a full travel lane in the dirt off the hottop. So in the winter, when they plow, they go down, turn around and meet that first pass, they leave me with about eight feet of the hottop that I have to clean on that curb. I'm right on the big curb. And by going off on the, on the original pass, they also dig down the dirt, they're breaking down the hottop constantly and throwing rocks.
So are we saying that the road is built, is not in the actual right-of-way for the road?
That's correct. It goes right over his property.
Yeah.
The post is in the middle of the road, the metal post.
That's right.
They didn't do the post correctly and they didn't do the turnaround correctly.
I have the original layout of the whole, all those properties on the road. It goes at an angle like that.
Yeah.
Which affected your, which affected your ability to follow the road, turn around the road. So the whole road project was, and they just went with it and the selectmen at the time said, "Oh, poor Howard. Poor Howard. Poor Howard gave us the chef and town and everybody else."
Yep.
I don't feel I should have to be cleaning the road. I do it all winter long, I have to clean the road. When they go around, they push back the snow, and I understand because you don't know how much snow's coming. But when they turn around and meet that first pass, I've got all that road that I have to clean all by myself and, you know, I'm a widow, I'm getting older and tired and...
Yeah. Well, I can, one thing I can promise you that, you know, I think, I think that we could probably agree that we can send the road commissioner down there to take a look at that situation.
I've had him down, he's gone so far as to say that maybe you put some guidepost or any, something, something to keep people on the hottop on the first pass.
Yep.
Because there's a whole, there's a travel lane, you can ask her, and it's her property. They drive on her property.
Okay.
Sounds like there was a huge ball dropped on that project.
Yeah.
Which, which we may not be able to fix that part.
See, that almost sounds like that road needs to be reservate.
It does need to be reservate.
Well, it shouldn't be.
That's, that's not going to speed it up.
I know, it's still, to correct the problem because...
Yep. Okay.
It's 80 years old, I don't want to be out there tarot blowing the snout.
I don't blame you. I wouldn't want to tarot the road at 50 years old.
I don't want to do it now.
Okay. Anything else on this, on this matter that anybody would like to add?
So as far as like input into the plan, not before it goes, before the town, can we do anything like that? Can we meet with the commissioner at all or...
Sure. I mean, like I said, the meetings where, the meetings are all public meetings where the board and the commissioner would be, would be talking about that. So those are, and there's always, as you're taking advantage of tonight, there's always a public comment period where, you know, if you, if you see a draft of a plan and you have some thoughts on it, then yeah, of course, then the public's welcome to comment on that. It's not, it's, it's not, none of it's secret or anything like that, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the agenda, is the agenda posted on the website?
I generally post it on the Friday before the meeting.
Yeah.
On the website.
Right now, we meet every other Tuesday.
No, to be honest with you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Was there any other, was there, was anyone here for public comment on any other issue or matter?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, folks. See you, guys. Sorry, I would have gone there.
It's more expensive to maintain, well, you know better, isn't it? I mean, once it's there.
For a couple of weeks.
I know. We might have to look at some of those, like, temporary, it's not the long-term decision. We build that. But it's the short.
It's triage.
It's exactly what it is.
It's triage.
It's not the best situation, but it's...
He was here the whole time?
Yeah, no, he let us know.
Oh, I didn't want to put him on. That wouldn't have been fair.
You want this back?
Because Town Hall Guest hasn't left until recently.
Who's next?
Okay.
Town Hall Guest or Town Hall Guest?
Okay. Don't worry about it.
Well, you can have this too. This is the petition that you...
We already did amendments. Let's do the, let's do the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
All favor? Okay. Okay. So next item on the agenda is Ben Smith, who's a certified community planner, has graciously agreed to come speak to us tonight and talk to us a little bit about the role of a planner, what, what services a planner might provide for a town like Durham, how a planner might work with a code enforcement officer, with ordinances, with a comp plan. And, because we've talked about, you know, do we need to hire a planner in the past, but it's, when I attended the MMA convention a few weeks ago, I met several planners and there are opportunities to contract with a planner and not actually have them as an employee, but you enter into an agreement to provide planning services. And so anyway, Ben, why don't you come on up and sit down and start by telling us a little bit about yourself and your background and then we can maybe just have a fairly informal question and answer section here.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm Ben Smith and I'm a community planner in Maine. I went to the Muskee School of Public Service, USM, and have been working private sector, public sector for towns, state, a number of different positions over the last 12, 13 years or so. And the chairman had asked me basically to come in and talk a little bit about municipal planning. It sounds like you've had some conversations about that in the past. And planners really can provide a wide range of services on a day-to-day basis, but I think the main role of a planner is to look at issues across departments. Lots of times, it's very easy in your day-to-day to have your head down and get focused on what you need to do over the next month or two. And planners bring a perspective across departments as well as looking at things on a longer timeframe as well, I think. So, you know, planners in general are, they do everything from, you know, a lot of people think of planners as development review, planning board support. That's certainly a big part of a lot of people's day-to-day. But there's also more policy and ordinance work that folks are involved in in longer-term planning. So whether it's things like a comprehensive plan or open space planning or things like, you know, bicycle pedestrian plans or other kinds of things that are either focused on a time-wide basis or maybe even a neighborhood or a particular district in town. But, you know, everything as well, grant writing, grant administration, project management. A big part of my job is actually not just make sure the plans get through select board and council, it's make sure that plans are implemented. So that kind of follow-up work is a big part of it as well. So I, with that, I, hopefully might be a bit of a, enough of an introduction that we can get into the back and forth and questions and that kind of thing.
So any of you guys have questions?
I've got plenty, but I'm going to give you guys a couple too.
Hit away, though. I can get us started. So, so historically, this, I think, this town, we've kind of, you know, almost combined the code enforcement officer and planner role because I think, you know, it was, as you say, really focused on, you know, site reviews and ordinance interpretations and things of that sort. So can you talk a little bit about, like, the role of planner versus code enforcement officer and where they kind of complement each other and how they're also, how they're different?
Yep. I think that code officers are very focused on building code and lots of times, things that happen within a building envelope on a particular property. I know in a lot of towns, the code officer is also providing administrative support to Board of Appeals or the planning board or both. Sometimes they're doing development review, kind of writing up the town staff review, kind of comparing a project with the ordinances and getting that ready for the planning board. In towns that have some planning capacity in addition to code enforcement, code officers, you know, again, it varies. There's quite a range of things, but I think code officers tend to be more focused on building specific and building code and, you know, inspections versus ordinance and development review is kind of the natural line between the two.
Is planner typically the person that's actually writing the ordinances? Or is that, is a lawyer typically doing that? Or what is, like, if we have, we have ordinances that are, people love to say, you know, are a mess in some areas and maybe conflict with each other, so what would a planner's role be in perhaps, you know, dealing with that type of a situation?
Yep. I think depending on how technical, you know, a lawyer might be involved in ordinance development, certainly, here's any non-technical ordinance, a domestic chicken ordinance or a wind energy ordinance, I mean, those are examples of things that, you know, can be developed within the community. Things like growth impact fees will very often have some legal review as well. You know, I, when I write ordinances, I, I think a review by the code officer is also good because there's a natural, you know, how, is, where are the enforceability problems going to be? Is this an ordinance that... Is this an ordinance that is even gonna make sense to have on the books if it's not enforceable? I think some of the other things that you know, planners and code officers have, you know, in my day-to-day interaction, code officer will often say, you know, on an interpretation issue of the code, say, you know, what exactly was the policy discussion around this ordinance? What were what was the intent or the goal behind the ordinance when it was written? If there's an interpretation issue. So I don't know if that answers some of your question. I kind of went back to the code officer a little bit there. But for a lot of different types of things, planner is certainly qualified to to write that ordinance. But depending on the nature of it, you might have some other outside folks take a look at it.
And what is you know, you mentioned the planning board support. So what would a what would the typical like, you know, nuts and bolts support for planning board look like? You mentioned, you know, is it typically the planner's role to review things before they get to the planning board or?
I I think that's how a lot of towns do it. That's certainly how I've seen it most often, where either a planner on staff or a planner that's been contracted will, you know, meet with applicants. They will handle, you know, the submissions when they come in. They will review them for completeness, kind of compare them with the standards of the ordinance and say, oh, we need more copies or you didn't address the standard in the ordinance and and have some work back and forth with applicants before it even gets to the planning board and then be there for meetings to handle questions and those kinds of things. You know, I have seen scenarios where a code officer will, you know, take on that role and be there for meetings. You know, I'm not sure of what your experience is, but in a, you know, a town with maybe one code officer who's out in the field for at least a few days a week, it can be a lot to handle some of the prep work that goes into those meetings, but.
What about switching gears on onto like the comprehensive plan type of stuff? Like we're we're in the middle of redoing our comprehensive plan and we're we're well into what you would call the, you know, the kind of inventory and analysis phase where we're basically documenting current state on all those topics that are required. But then, you know, phase two is what the what the state office tells us is really the most important part is like the future land use plan. Like, okay, where are the growth areas? Where are the, you know, protected areas? What type of development is okay or not okay? What type of how might a a planner help with that part of the process?
Yeah, I I think it's not uncommon for communities to handle a lot of the chapter and inventory work on their own. It, like you said, it's basically how have we gotten to where we are? What's the current snapshot of the community when it comes to things like natural resources and the transportation network and historical resources and those kinds of things? But then there's that future-looking part of the comp plan. And that's really what was at the heart of comprehensive planning when it started in Maine is identifying those growth areas and the places you wanted to focus growth away from, the rural areas. And that part of the plan is meant to be built on a vision of the community and a vision for different parts of the community that is built on a a public process. And I have looked at your website and forgive me, it was a pretty cursory look. But I, you know, I presume that you have had or will be getting into some kind of public process around bringing people together or an online survey or, you know, whatever it may be to kind of build some consensus that would become the vision for the community and the plan. And then from there, you can basically show what that vision looks like on a map, which is really what the future.
We have we have done that. We don't. We don't really have like a lot of other towns have had. We don't have a dedicated like section of our website to the comprehensive plan. But we have had facilitated public meeting that was pretty well-attended. You may you probably know Craig freshly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he he facilitated that meeting for us. We have done. We did a townwide survey. We've members of the committee have gone out to various groups around town, you know, you know, churches, fire department, other clubs and and to develop that vision. So we actually do have the vision statement piece, you know, pretty far along. And like you said, we're kind of in the the nuts and bolts of marching through the inventory analysis chapters now. And then and starting starting to work on goals and strategies a little bit. But we envision another round of public outreach where we're, you know, vetting goals and strategies with the town and then really getting the town involved in the future vision piece.
Yeah.
So that's that's kind of that's kind of where we are right now with the goal of of having a plan ready for the town to vote on at our April twenty nineteen town meeting. So, okay. About how the maybe like how the contracting process might work? Is there a is there a typical like contract arrangement? I mean, I've seen one contract. I know like that the town of Lisbon has with their planner. And I know you're assuming some of those duties. But for the guys, it's basically it's a flat, it's a ceiling amount for the year, you know, and then there's usually a statement of work where it's like, okay, the this contract planner will attend the planning board meetings and, you know, whatever other, you know, tasks to be completed. Is that a fairly typical, you know, contract arrangement or?
I I think it can go one of a couple ways where you have that more of a it's almost like a on-call or kind of retainer kind of service where you outline a range, a pretty broad range. And and it's it's kind of like whatever comes up or whatever needs some attention. In Lisbon, you know, it it's some planning board review. It is updating their comprehensive plan. They're in the middle of that process as well. Retail marijuana is an issue for a lot of communities. That's something, you know, that we've been spending some time on. And, you know, in the past, you know, prior to my involvement, just part of that blanket contract was looking at a one ninety-six corridor plan, looking at, you know, Route nine land use plan. So economic development work. So it's it's kind of a kind of come to an agreement on what would be a reasonable amount of work on a given week. And it could be anything from which week.
Depending on the needs.
Another another way to do it would be is if you had a specific project or a specific ordinance and and you more tightly defined it and, you know, do maybe more of a traditional scope and budget and deadline, that kind of thing. But if you're looking at, you know, a range of issues and just kind of, you know, wanna have an arrangement where you can send an email or give a call and, you know, we got a meeting next week. Can you, you know, that kind of arrangement is closer to what we have in Lewiston.
Okay.
Lisbon, excuse me.
Is that a hourly-type arrangement from the contracting or is it a set price for a lot of time?
It's a set price. It there's not a per-hour amount. But there's an assumption that, you know, some weeks will be, you know, ten or fifteen hours. Other weeks might only be a couple. And over the course of the year, it kind of works out. And that's the arrangement they've had for four or five years, maybe six years.
So so basically it'd be a flat rate of the thousand dollars for three months' worth of work and whatever we deem is the work in in that amount of time. That's not the number, but just as an example.
That's that's the idea is that you would, you know, kind of figure out, you know, do we think maybe five hours or ten hours on an average week? And, you know, that flexibility is kind of built in. And there's a number that is set for budgeting purposes that is easy to know. And it's not trying to budget X amount for a marijuana ordinance and X amount for planning board support and another amount for, you know, a corridor study or something like that. It's it's an arrangement that has worked pretty well for for that community.
And if if we're looking at certain ordinances, whatever suggestion might come up or pop up, basically, you would probably take that suggestion, initiate, make up whatever you think that ordinance should look like. And then that'll go through the review to tweak it, like you said earlier. So basically, you're gonna be the initiator. Once we say, well, we're thinking about this, we don't have an ordinance for it, you're gonna stop putting that together or or someone, whoever we hire.
Right, yeah. The a a planner works with the community and if you have an identified issue, say you have.
Backlot ordinance.
Backlot ordinance. I was gonna use the I was gonna use chickens running around, domestic chickens, because that's a little more, you know, not quite on the.
Use that example.
Yeah, right. But the idea is, you know, once the issue's been identified, whatever it is, then the planner would go do some research, come back, maybe bring some ordinances from surrounding communities if they're available and, you know, work with this board and the planning board to come up with something that works for for the community.
Any other questions?
Good start.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think, you know, we're we're definitely in the exploratory phase and just in trying to learn more about the role of planner, you know, versus code enforcement officer, which is what most of our experience has been with and and see, you know, where we might need to go a little bit different direction than we have in the past. So thank you for, oh, did you have one?
Yeah, if I could get one in and and maybe this is too broad to even come up with any type of hypothesis on this. But a a town of this size and so forth, what do you see? Like, for example, what what do you think someone like us would need?
I think knowing what I know about the town, I know that this is a growing community. I know that a lot of towns in this region that are growing are facing pressures around service delivery, around maybe loss of open space, a need for recreational amenities, are looking at having developers maybe pay their own way to a whatever extent that that gets looked at. I also know that a a lot of communities are thinking about where growth happens and how much growth happens in relation to schools and in relation to things like road plowing and extension of utilities, those kinds of things. But I I live only a couple of towns over and I have been around town, run around pond and used the river a lot. So I know that there's assets in the community that that are being used. And a lot of communities frankly are trying to figure out how they can, you know, get more economic growth to complement the residential growth as it relates to tax base. I'm not sure if that's something that Durham is, I think so, struggling with, but.
I mean, there's there's some people that have been here for a hundred years and they kind of like the way it is.
Yep.
And some have been here for ten. They like it. That's why they moved here. But what we need and what we want, there's a couple of different buckets there. And some of those things cross over. Tax base is all we have to pay for it. And if we're not careful, we're we're not really gonna tax them out of the town, so to speak, because not for them to move, probably they gotta sell their place. So somebody's gonna have to be willing to move in and pay the taxes. But to have the things that they want and need, we're gonna have to look at somehow getting some kind of, I don't wanna use the word industry, but something in here that's gonna help pay for that. Preferably, you'd like to have, and I this is just an example, so I'm not suggesting we have a warehouse show up in town. But you want something that uses very little amenities, because we don't have many anyways, but pays a fair amount of taxes. So this town needs to look at things like that and still be able to grow controlled so that we don't end up like Portland or something like that. I'm not saying Portland's bad. I like going there, but you know what I mean?
Don't wanna live there.
No, I don't wanna live there. I don't want my town to end up like where I don't wanna live.
I think that is part of the reason a lot of communities end up looking at planning issues, whether they have a planner, but they're looking at those issues of what is this town gonna look like twenty or thirty years from now? And what is it gonna be like to live here? Are my kids gonna be able to live here? And are they gonna have the same kind of experience that, you know, you've had? There there's a lot that goes into that. And how do you continue to grow without wrecking the place kind of thing is a pretty common head-scratcher.
Yeah, that I mean, that very in our visioning, I mean, that's that's basically, you know, what you hear is that, you know, people love the town the way it is. They are comfortable with, you know, some amount of growth and some amount of commercial development, but they don't wanna lose the the core of what the town is, you know, the the rural character and the, you know, the scale of things here. So but it is a challenge, as Mark said.
I mean, people move come from away sometimes to leave what they got, but they don't wanna leave all of it. So when they get here and find out we don't have any of it, then they want some of it. So, you know, we gotta be, we gotta and it's gonna grow. I mean, if if we don't if we don't do it while we're watching it, we're gonna wake up some morning and there'll be a billion-dollar building sitting out there making all kinds of money. And and once that big business comes in, you're you're gonna lose it then, you know, because they're gonna have the money, so they're gonna be able to do what they want. So we we do need to grow, but how do we do it? And, you know, what's the process to make sure that we do it? That kind of tries to come to the middle, please, the ten-year people and the hundred-year people.
We should invite some of those hundred-year people to the meeting. I'd like to.
I think there's a couple in town, yeah. I know those are nineties. I know that.
Any other questions from the board? Ben, thank you very much for making the trip over, especially when you when you had, you know, your your normal Wyndham meeting was tonight. So I appreciate you getting in here so we could speak with you. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm halfway there.
You are?
You gotta be close to it.
I will be next week. I'm over halfway.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Kyle from the Royal River Land Trust. Do you wanna call on up and follow your accounts? What would you like to speak with us about tonight?
Well, I'd like to thank you guys for partnership this summer and tell you that we're proud of the work that we've teamed up on and done at Run Around Pond Recreation Area. Just looking to finalize a couple of a couple of last items, including a ladder painted crosswalk across Run Around Pond Road on the new trail crossing.
Yeah.
And cleaning up the broken gate and installing a accessible bollard-type feature for the fire department.
What's a bollard? I don't know what that is.
It restricts access across.
All over the OFC.
You know, they're just like a post.
Okay, so that's what I thought it might be. I don't wanna jump ahead or anything.
It could be a rock.
Yeah.
Or a post. It's any so what we're looking at doing is an eight-by-eight post on a pin with a Knox locker, a fire department lock, so that they can access it. Basically, just wanna continue to discourage the the more illicit use in that area and show people that we're paying attention to it and that people care about it.
Yeah.
What side of the road? On the on the mill side of the road?
We're looking at doing a crosswalk. The most important thing I wanted to talk about today was the crosswalk. It's with the the new road, it's quiet and fast and and things happen pretty quickly there. We decided to not pursue a crosswalk at the traditional crossing at the break in the guardway, guardrail right by the bridge. It's it's way, way too fast right there.
The curve is right there, too.
Yeah, it's 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 pretty blind. The there's a new trail crossing. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, just towards Davis Road.
Yeah.
Intersection.
Yeah.
Not where the snowmobile trail crosses, but just the side or just the the recreation area. Not where the snowmobile trail crosses, but just the side, or just the the recreation area side of it. Um and it loops down by the old cellar holes, cellar holes on the on the state land downstream from from the bridge. And does end up looping back to that fast crossing near the near the bridge. Without promoting it or closing it, there's a nice break in the guard rail that people can scurry through.
Mm-hmm.
Um until such time that you guys decide to do that differently. But at this point, we'd like to just promote that safer crossing and make it safer with crosswalk and signs. And I had met with, Ellen and I had met with Ruth and and road commissioner and fire chief. And um we seemed, I think everybody seemed comfortable with moving that forward pending conversation with you guys.
So the four of you, like the fire chief, road commissioner, you guys are all on the same page on this stuff?
Uh, when when we left the room, we were.
Yeah.
Basically, he said that we couldn't do anything until the board, so.
Right, but as far.
Cuz I live right there, so I'm just kinda wondering.
Sure.
I'm there pretty much every day. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess the question I have is the part that you're talking about is set away from the parking area, right? Like the part where the trail, the walking trail crosses the road is not particularly close to the parking area.
Closer to the snowmobile trail, the snowmobile bridge.
So I just feel like, I mean, I feel like people are gonna cross with the parking. People being people.
Then then you need to walk down the shoulder to get to the trail. So I guess depending on what people's goals are, we're we're just trying to provide an access for the trail. I I think it's unreasonable to strike the whole road.
Yeah, no, 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 totally, I just, I feel like most, right now, most people come there for the water, right? I mean.
To cross at that at that crossing near the bridge?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I I can see why it's not super practical and I'm not really saying I I don't have a strong preference one way or the other. I just think it seems like most people come there right now for the water and not for the trail. You know what I mean?
And it may be that there's a lot of people that don't know the trails.
Yeah, I mean, the trail's fairly new, right? Well, at least what we're doing to call it out is fairly.
Crosswalk and a sign, people.
Right, yeah.
Recognize that it was there. Sticks are lightweight.
Yeah.
So we we installed a kiosk, which came out to be a little bit more sided than I anticipated. But um it's it's a beautiful structure. So there's a kiosk right there in the parking lot and the trail departs from there.
Okay.
And goes out along the edge of the pond, out to the old runaround and then down across the road there. We were just looking for a way to to move people in a loop without being on the shoulder there.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep.
I suppose, and if you designate a spot, that will that will direct some. They'll they'll at least get curious and walk over and see what it is.
And it's all well blazed and cleared and it looks like it's been down there.
Supposed to be there, yeah.
Came out nice. Um unfortunately, with this last windstorm, we had to reroute a piece of that trail closer on, further onto the state land and had like fifty blowdowns on it.
Wow.
So it kind of leads us to another another point, which I don't know if you wanna go ahead and.
Well, are you are you looking for permission from us for that crosswalk? Is that?
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, the trust is footing the bill, it's just letting us do it, letting you do it, or how's?
I'm not sure who's gonna pay for the crosswalk, but it was, I think it was more of a.
I mean, it's pretty minimal anyway, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We can paint it with.
Without curl?
Stencils.
Okay.
But we need to put a culvert in on. One side to create because of the ditch, just put a short piece of culvert in, a little gravel so they can cross there.
Without caving in the loose banks on that ditch.
Yep. Okay.
I checked the site distance from the corner, it was about five hundred feet to four hundred.
On on the short side?
Plenty of plenty of like.
So do you want a motion for that, or?
Up near the.
Put it in where Calvin wants it.
And the cars are a lot quieter, they're not banging and clinging when they come down the road anymore.
Calvin, what is that speed limit through there?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty?
Yeah.
I mean, you kinda wonder.
Sixty-five? Sixty-five on that corner, yeah.
Sixty-five?
On the on the corner, you can do eighty on the straightaway, but sixty-five on the corner. I don't wanna do much more than that.
Yeah.
Unless you've got your summer car with the tuned suspension to come around with, yeah.
So you're looking for a motion that I think Rob was gonna give us?
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
I'm not sure I'm in a position to call for a motion.
No, Rob was, you were looking for approval.
I moved that we approved the crosswalk and culvert installation as Calvin and these guys work out in the field.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And I think we need, um uh do we need a motion for the for fixing the gate and putting in the bollards as well?
Do you wanna do that per our conversation that we have email notes about, just so that we're on the, so that it'll be removable with the fire department?
Man, could change it to just say all improvements.
Yeah, so.
As noted.
Let's get, so on this one, um I would move that we uh allow the Royal River Conservation Trust in partnership with uh a fire department and roads commissioner to replace the current broken gate uh with one or more removable bollards at the same location as the gate and that the removable bollards would have a lock and key maintained by the Durham Fire and Rescue Department.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, all right, so that takes care of that one.
And then we wanna discuss the possibility of bulk works, maybe cutting some of the trees.
The the other thing, the storm damage, this hopefully one every ten-year type blow or situation. Um right now, there's there's probably a dozen significant trees across the the new trail. With a with a day's work and a and a partner, I can go ahead and clean that up. I'm not sure if that's the long-term solution for Durham's recreational visioning or planning. Um maybe it's a bigger conversation with with a committee oversight, um Parks and Recreation or or Land Use Committee or some type of conservation-ish.
Yeah.
But in in the short term, it would be, it would be good to have some help with that bulk work in there. And I know that Ruth gets pinged every now and then with with volunteer requests. Um that might be better for, there's plenty of sticks to pick up and kick out of the way and and break. Cuz some of the, I noticed some pretty pretty sticky sprinkles in there.
I was gonna say, are there any unsafe?
Uh, the whole thing's unstable and sprung in, yeah, it's it's not, it's not a kid's project.
Right, okay, so uh I wonder, I mean, do we put out a a call for, you know, we got plenty of people that with chainsaws in this town um that work in the woods for a living? Do we maybe put out the call for volunteers to see if if somebody's willing to go in and and do some work on the trail and?
Sure.
As far as like levels of 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 maintenance, it would be good to just have that safe and stabilized and open.
Yeah, I think it's for the short-term thing and then I, and then longer term, and Ruth has brought this up a couple of times about trying to reestablish our, you know, whether it's a recreation committee or conservation commission or whatever, we're gonna end up calling it. Um and I will, in defense of Ruth, I will say, you know, we've we've kind of uh given her the heisman on that a little bit, short-term. You know, just because we've got, you know, I mean, you heard the discussion on the roads here earlier, so we've got a little, you know, some big issues to uh.
Well, as that sneaks up on you a little bit more, we'd be happy to, I don't know, noodle it or sit as a as a guest member or however however we can, we can help that process.
Yeah, that that'd be great. I think it would be very helpful to have, um, you know, that type of institutional knowledge involved in the process that could, you know, help us get it up and running and and, you know, like, what, cuz what should this committee be doing? And, you know, cuz I don't, I don't think we're looking for people to agree to like mow the grass at Run Around Park once a week. I mean, I see that as like, you know, a public function that our public work should take care of, but other trail maintenance type stuff and whatever, you know, other type of work you you think of. So um it's some, it's something we need to have some conversations about. But in the short term, I think we need to, as you say, you know, kinda take care of that situation in terms of the blowdowns and make it safe before somebody, you know, goes down that trail and gets hurt.
Do you have a contact number so that if Ruth puts that out there, that they can just call you directly?
Um, sure, yeah.
Instead of having.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm I'm happy to to show them the the job, if that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That way, I mean, that just takes the middle person out of it. If you say, yo, you're gonna be there at nine o'clock, she's gonna call, make sure they can be, you can just talk directly with them and handle that.
Yeah, do we have a, do we have a good, you know, maybe you guys can work out like, you know, a good, you know, short description of the of the work that needs to be done, so we maybe we can put it on our website and say, hey, we're looking for a community volunteer for, you know, to to help us out, clear some storm damage from a trail, you know, whatever.
I got an idea, a lot of those.
We can get you something.
People probably already, the snowmobile club's a bit out there looking, so they gotta handle what it is.
Yeah, 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 so.
They've been out the bottom.
Right, so.
That was an expensive storm.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need something on the culvert that Calvin mentioned?
That was included in Rob's.
That was included.
All right.
Put that in there.
Just make it show.
Throw random.
Perfect.
Covers everything.
Anything else you wanna talk about tonight?
No, no, thanks for for everybody's time.
Thank you, and I I had something for you though.
Appreciate the work.
You, I was reading through the email here and um you you meant, and uh, you know, you thanked us, but I wanna thank your organization as well. I mean, I've gotten so much positive feedback from, you know, how Run Around Pond is looking and the sign and um and just the attention being paid down there and the cleanup efforts. And uh so I I wanna thank your organization. Um and you, in in the email, you you meant, there's a line here, it's various contractors and donors and volunteers and partners would be honored by recognition by the selectmen. And I think this was, you know, for part of the money that was used for that project. And I'm wondering, like, do you have a list of those people that, so that we could, um, maybe you can read back through that if you get back to us if you want.
I wonder if this is, if that is old enough that.
Alan said that to me just.
That plaque didn't capture it?
No, I don't know, Alan sent that email to me just a couple of weeks ago.
And this is, yeah, so maybe check that out if, cuz we certainly don't wanna overlook, you know, someone who, you know, or or a group that's, you know, made a significant contribution to the town, we definitely wanna recognize that.
We could do a letter and put it on the website.
Yeah, yeah, whatever it is. So if if there is somebody that or or a group that perhaps we have overlooked and not recognized, then it would, okay.
That would be good to know.
Yeah, let me definitely follow up on that. Um, yeah, it's, we've definitely changed the clientele down there, at least waking hours.
That's good.
Neither do we.
Away from there. Be great, so thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Okay.
Next, subject tank.
Is there anybody here for the the opening, the bid opening?
I can open up there, Ruth.
Okay.
So do you wanna do that now? Okay, yeah, that is, so now we're going to move to the.
What on earth am I looking at?
The opening of the bids for the apparatus. The fire department just put out bids for.
Is that why you're all here?
A, has that requested bids for a new rescue and a new uh fire engine and.
There's, there's more.
Why, what, wait, what, what is this?
This is, chief, you're planning on opening, right?
I guess I can.
When were the, when were the bids due?
Today.
Like, right now?
Didn't know what you wanted for a process.
I would say in the future, you open them, provide a summary, and then tell us what you wanna buy.
Uh, two of them here from Greenwood, one for a wheel coach.
Is it, is it typical that this would be done during a selectman's meeting?
It actually, in the past, it's always come in and been done during a selectman's meeting.
Yeah.
You guys haven't done it. And so I was uncertain whether you wanted to do it that way or not. But typically, the board always used to open them, record them, then give them back to the department head to review and come up with a recommendation.
Right.
That doesn't have to be in a board, it just has to be public, which means done in this building at two o'clock.
Right.
And anybody can review it.
But for this round, we've already.
Yeah, go for it now.
Is the tie, right, so in the future, let's let's think of another way to do this.
Yeah, cuz this is like twenty-five more than a free, I thought it was.
This is, this is gonna take half an hour to do this. It wasn't on the agenda, it was.
Added.
Added.
I think he's added, killing me.
All right, one from Greenwood for.
Is that for the ambulance or the truck?
Ambulance for a wheel coach.
It's a Christmas.
Yeah, it's uh, the option pricing is separate, but the vehicles are two hundred and two thousand nine hundred.
Who's the next one?
This one is Greenwood as well. For a rescue and it is fourteen.
It's for the fire truck, right?
No.
Still another rescue.
Another rescue?
Another rescue.
Okay.
This one is two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for the base price.
Chief, you want a knife?
Yeah, you got your weapon?
I don't have a weapon, but I got a knife for you, if you want. Why don't we help, make it go fast?
There you go.
Help?
Just make sure, chief.
This one is from Minuteman Fire and Rescue, rescue proposal. This one has a base price of two hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Well, I was just kinda putting these with this, we're gonna give it back to them anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna let you collect them.
Yeah, all right. We have room here.
This one is Sugar Wolf, which is PL custom. This one has a base price of two hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars.
I just want the man to touch it.
Sugar Wolf as well.
Yeah.
But is that, that was separately packaged, so is that?
Yeah, I think they probably gave all of them, one of the members. We're quickly looking.
Yeah, I just double-checked, right?
See what the top one says. And you're probably correct, this one is one hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and one dollars for a base price.
Oh, those are all the rescue.
Yeah, smoking is everything. Yeah, me and Todd's getting them.
Probably have a fire chief.
This one is from Autotronic.
This isn't a lowest number of.
For Braun. It has a base price of two hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
So these are all just a rescue truck?
Have you already read this one off, Bill?
Did we have, did we have something else that was bid?
Do you guys wanna see this or you wanna just pile it up there?
I was gonna bring this stuff back. I would've thought this would've been maybe a selectman or so.
Rescue again.
From Professional Vehicle Corporation.
You're doing good, chief.
Yeah, fantastic.
It's hard to look in and find the numbers sometime.
Yeah.
They don't just print it on the front page.
This one is a base price of one hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Sorry, money here, man.
Rescues?
Yeah. Yeah.
Video.
More of the same.
Well, I better check it. I, uh, PL custom, uh, Sugar Wolf, did you have two nineteen one eighty-three?
Yes.
Same ball.
Ooh, which one gave the free pack? We want that one.
I think, is that the one on the?
Yeah, this one is, yeah, Sugar Wolf, one ninety, nine oh one.
Those are copies of the other ones, yep. Those are copies of the other ones, yep.
They really wanted to make sure we got it.
Yeah.
That's Pierce.
Alright, you're all fire trucks?
That's Pierce, yep.
Okay, and that, I believe it's a rescue, I think. This is Pierce. The engine. Different price. It, it's five thirty six, two sixty four.
That's dingy.
Footphone from Dingy Machine, um, four seventy five, three seventy one, seventy five.
It's Autotronics, this is fire truck.
This is from Autotronics. The engine and it is four ninety four, five fifty.
Yep, whole thing.
So those generally, this is not straight up. I mean, they all have something a little different that they offer, a way that they do something.
In general, the RFP, uh, when I put the RFP out, rather than make it, if I, if I'm too precise on some of the stuff, I end up making it vendor specific.
Right.
So some of the stuff is a little open-ended, I guess, and that's really so that it doesn't limit anyone from participating in the process, there's some general things like the
But.
the chassis, engine size, stuff like that, we may decide ahead of time, but a lot of the
Okay.
compartment spacing, design and other things.
We're, we're really looking at, or what I would like to see is best value, so.
Typically, what I would present to the board, it uh, and I actually thought about this, this, if we were approaching this, that with a different board and everything, and this is how the process has always been, but typically what I would present to the board is I'd do a comparison sheet, and we'd do the comparison sheet based on what we received for material. Part of the reason we go for the RFP in the first place is so that we, if we say, well, you know, this really isn't what, we don't like what you presented here, we have an opportunity to go back and discuss with the vendor and see if they have their options that might work better for the community, or if maybe there's something we put in there, and because of their costs, that it drives it off the chart, so it allows a little bit of give and take, going back and forth and stuff, a little bit of negotiation, so typically I'd come back to you guys, probably not in two weeks, probably in a month.
Yep.
With a comparison sheet, they would actually spell it out that uh, each one of our, you know, RFPs, we listed the items we wanted to see, and that would be a line across on the spreadsheet. The spreadsheet would answer if, would demonstrate if each vendor managed to meet that, or what they put in instead.
And with that, you're gonna provide a recommendation of?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
What your preferences and why.
Committee's recommendation.
Of the committee, yeah. Okay, sounds good to me, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Don't let that interfere with the Christmas shopping, though.
Yeah, Jesus.
That is his Christmas shopping.
As long as you don't forget me, chief.
Okay, uh, moving to a much different topic, septic tank waste disposal agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's out of the blue, I I got this, this letter from the Lewiston Auburn Water Pollution Control Authority, uh, and they want us to sign an agreement for management of septic tank waste, um.
Who's septic? Why are they, why would they send that to us and not like whoever we hire to pump septic tanks?
Well, basically, the way it's been in the past, now, Rob may have some insight on this.
He's dying, he he's chomping at the bit over here.
I'll let you go with what's in the past, and I'll tell you what the future is.
We need to have a source for whoever does, whoever you call to heavy septic, if they don't have a place to take it, this is a source. That's what we've been told in the past, we've always had to have, have that, now, maybe things have changed, and we don't have to, I don't know. I mean, but it was kinda like, kinda like when we lost our dump, we need to have something for the townspeople, that's why we looked into all these other things. Now, that may be different now, I don't know.
I've never heard of it, I gotta give Matt credit for thinking up extra revenue sources, like a genius. And I'll tell you right now that Brunswick will take any and all of it and charge it when you dump, and if you need a letter that says that, then I'd be glad to provide it, but I've never even heard of that.
That was the first time I heard of it, when I was on the school, that's what.
I'm gonna start sending these out to surrounding towns from Brunswick for two hundred bucks, see, I'm gonna come back, yeah.
If we don't, if we don't legally have to do that, then I don't think we should.
Is this something we've been doing for several years and just never questioned before?
We've paid two hundred and fifty dollars every year.
Yeah.
If I can explain, I can tell you where that comes from, it's in the shoreline zoning, state mandated shoreline zoning ordinance. I can't issue a permit for a campsite for anyone to have, unless they show, they have to show a contract with the receiving, who's gonna receive, it doesn't matter who owns the port body, I have to have a contract showing who's gonna receive the waste from that port body, has to be in writing.
Okay.
So I'm guessing that's where it comes from, it's in the shoreline zone.
So we can just use
State mandated.
Rob's letter, though, I mean, if Rob's willing to take it, then.
Yeah, why? No, it always goes back to the contractor, though.
It says, it has to be a signed contract from the person receiving the, so I'm guessing that that's where it steps from.
I'll shoot you an email.
Okay.
Actually, I already did. Just print that, put it on file.
Okay, well, we'll pass it on.
Okay, if that works.
Alright. I'll be curious to see what Mac has to say, though, if you wanna let him know.
Don't we'll pay.
I'm gonna call me if you want.
But no.
Alright, at this time, I am uh, I'm moving us into an assessor's section, so that we can discuss a uh, an abatement for a local property. Need a second on that?
Second.
On favor? Okay, we are, we are now assessors.
Obvious.
So, do you want to um, is there any background you need to provide, or you just want me to read this?
Yeah, you have it, I.
Okay, so this is for the property, um, oh, she doesn't put the map on the lot, oh, here, uh, is it? Just says account number thirty two, but anyway, so I'll just read the letter, this is from Donna, our assessor's agent. Dear Mrs. Waltman, uh, thank you and Jared for taking the time for an interior inspection of your property today, as you know, I have assessed your new construction as complete for the April one, twenty seventeen tax year. After my review, I changed the classification of your garage to a barn and added unfinished for your living space. This results in a reduction of value of sixty three thousand eight hundred dollars in value, or uh, one thousand two hundred and two dollars and sixty three cents in taxes. It will be my recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, Assessors, that this abatement be granted at their November fourteen, twenty seventeen meeting. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know, I'll be back to see you in a year. So that's, that's basically um.
So is this a new structure, or?
Yeah, it sounds like they just didn't have it finished.
Yeah, it was classified incorrectly, and because it was classified incorrectly, the tax bill was um, was sent, it was too high by, by quite a bit.
So it's still unfinished.
It was unfinished as of April first.
So now it is finished.
I don't know if it is finished or not.
Last tax year, it was unfinished.
Right.
I gotcha, so. So we'll move to accept her recommendation. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Then we all have to sign this, I already signed it. Okay, and I am moving us, thank you, Mark, I'm moving us out of assessors' section, a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are selectmen again.
Thank you.
Department Committee reports, chief.
Okay.
What?
We'll do the rest of it with the the department and committee reports, the fire, the fire chief hiring process in the office.
Yeah, yeah, I figured we just talked to him while he was up here.
Okay.
Chief, you're not on here, you're on the agenda.
Well.
I'm not.
I need to stay.
That was one of the adjustments early on.
It's the first meeting of the month, it's the one I'm supposed to be at.
We were saying they had road commissioner.
Calvin, you can go.
No, you can stay.
He's a glutton for punishment, he likes to show up and get used.
You did, oh, boy, that's why he's here.
So I do my report, or you said you had something else, I don't have the agenda, there was something else.
No, no, we just wanna talk a little bit about um, hiring, the process and the committee for replacing you.
You guys have copies of my report?
No.
No, I didn't, I must have not been paying attention, sorry.
She was probably answering the seventeen year.
I sent it over late, it is, yeah. Sent it over late, she had to process all these, this material coming in.
Yeah, we're like these huge packages.
Well, first thing I wanted to talk about is the per diem staffing, it uh, it uh, it's going very well, this past weekend, this last Saturday, we actually started, I got one more, anybody want? We actually started with having some coverage on the weekends, that one of the things I said I had, didn't have, was Saturday and Sunday yet, but this group of people that's coming in this time around, couple of them long weekend time, so I I think I'll be able to start filling the Saturdays and Sundays, we actually had staffing on Saturday, we have staffing again one of the days this weekend. So it uh, it it's not just the staffing aspect of it, it's had an impact on our response times. I actually think it's had an impact on the morale within the department, you know, it uh, so. Overall, it, I was very concerned.
Why do you think it's impacted morale, why would, how would it impact morale?
Because the positive impact is that the people are there, things are getting done quicker, our response times are better. It weighs on everybody when we have a call and they're not available and can't go, so. My read, and you, we got a couple, three, three of them here tonight, you can ask them, but my read is that morale is up, one cuz I'm leaving, but two because. I had to throw that in, but two because of the per diem, I'm hoping more of it because of the per diem impact. It uh, uh, yeah, it uh, you know, my take is that, yeah, it's it is well worth the investment that we put into it to this point in time, so I'm, I'm, I, I'm really hoping.
Less people going, man, I gotta do this again this weekend?
You know, I, I would think that that would help, for sure, yeah. Yeah. You know, I don't wanna, but if you do it every weekend. Yeah, and it's taking the burden off them, you know, it uh, they don't feel like, hey, I gotta do it, I've gotta be around, it's taking that weight, that burden. I think they, they enjoy their participation in their time more because it's not a case of, well, hey, I gotta be there, I gotta do this, or I have to do that, because, hey, I I enjoy doing this. I think, I think the fun piece of it is coming back into it a little bit because of that, so I think it, yeah. It is had. I don't have to do dishes. You know, and if you guys agree or disagree, feel free to weigh in, but I I think it's, to me.
I know as a driver in in Pats, you get, you know, tone down what, no, I get to the station, you send in the rescue, you got no EMT, so now you you gotta refer it to the next closest town or or service, you know, and and the way it's been working the last five, six, seven weeks, uh, it it's great.
Do you think, is it sustainable, do you think you'd be able to, or the next chief will be able to keep it staffed?
The people, the people we're getting, we didn't advertise, I told you that, we weren't gonna advertise, we were gonna get friends of friends, hopefully, let them out. And it, this, this next influx of people, there's probably five or six, there's six, six coming in in this next influx of people. And I, Diana and I have talked a little bit about it, and one, we're overwhelmed, we're trying to process the people there plus the volunteers, it's about eleven, I think there was maybe eleven people on the report, a monthly meeting between per diem people and new members to the department, uh, and we just, yeah, we, so we're kinda putting applications on hold, we're taking names, but as far as membership, we wanna wait and see what we need. But I think as far as the number of people, we actually have one person that's already on the waiting list for if we have openings after the first of the year, paramedic. So I actually think, as long as we keep our wages competitive, that people are looking for places with a positive environment that they can go in, and we try to keep the environment positive, and I think it is, it uh, positive environment and work a shift here and there and stuff, so I, I, I think for the foreseeable future, as long as we keep the, the funding of the system going, it uh, it is sustainable and it, yeah, it's. I am very pleased, a lot of times when I do this stuff, everybody thinks I'm just throwing it out there, but I was really struggling with whether I was recommending something that would be as positive as I hoped it would be, and I think it had more of a positive impact than I hoped it would.
Good.
We're at a test, all the way out is a pass, that's done and over with, it's always a piece I sweat. Locksmith, the locksmith, it uh, we've discussed having a locksmith come in, the locksmith will be here next Wednesday to start the, to put the key pads on, and some of the doors are gonna be rekeyed, and we'll have the security piece of the station back. RFPs, we just covered those. It uh, um, County EMA, we Homeland Security Grant two thousand and seventeen, it uh, probably about four, three months ago, somewhere in that vicinity, we put in for ten portable radios, they just got the final approvals today.
Didn't we have to accept that grant, I remember seeing that.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. It uh, so we, I got the final approval, so we'll, we'll, it's for four thousand two hundred and something, and it's fully funded, it's, this one's not a matching grant, this is fully funded, we pay upfront, but it's reimbursed.
Excellent.
I wish all grants were that way. It uh, next piece I wanted to talk to you about is the personnel policy, one of the things was, it's not gonna interfere with per diem, but one of the things is, I was reviewing it, um, that I ended up with a question on is if I bring people in under different job descriptions, it uh, what happens in regard to overtime, benefits, and all of that. So it went to the attorney for review, and his only concern was not the, the overtime, the different pay rates, as long as there were different job descriptions, and there was definitely, by reading the job descriptions, a reason for two job descriptions, it wasn't just to save money, that we met all the requirements there. His big concern was in regard to the benefits, it uh, it doesn't clearly spell out, it says twenty eight hours for a four day work week, thirty five hours for a five day work week of regularly scheduled hours. So theoretically, if I worked two or three job descriptions, regularly scheduled hours, it could be argued that they would accumulate and put me in a position to receive benefits. Follow what I'm saying?
Not really, cuz you already receive benefits, don't you?
Well, no, not me.
Him personally.
The person, the individual. Not who, not needs, but what?
The part-time people and the.
Any part-time people we employ for the town of Durham, if they work two or three job descriptions and they have meet the threshold requirements for benefits.
I think we need to manage that.
Could be argued that they're eligible for benefits, we don't have anybody that's in that position at this point in time, but I really think, and the attorney seemed to think so based on his letter, that it's perhaps something we should look at. Ruth and I have been working on trying to come up with some wording that would address it and still be fair to the employees and stuff, that would remove that liability or possibility.
Okay.
And that's completely the, it's from our personal policy, who gets covered for the benefits.
Yeah.
So it's whatever our personal policy says, so that's why we're looking at the personnel policy to try and, and tweak it so that it works out.
But the goal here, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that we want our policy to hold up and not put us in a position where we have to offer benefits to somebody who's accumulating a certain number of hours because they're working multiple part-time jobs.
Yep, but and the other side of it is, is it limit, in the interim, it limits employees because obviously I'm not going to do something that could put us across that benefit threshold, not because I don't want the employee to get it, but because I don't have the funding.
It's just not the intent of the policy, right?
So it actually limits the employees, you could have an employee that's more than willing to work by the six job descriptions and accumulate forty, fifty hours a week, and they like that, they're good with that, but they can't do that because of the benefit piece of it, so.
Okay.
So you wanna be able to allow them to do that, if, if in fact that opportunity arrives, but not, not be in position to the benefits, right?
So, so I, so you're gonna bring something to us at some point to, is the policy change, okay?
We're working on it.
People wanna run it by me, I'll, I'll go with that.
Cool.
Okay.
I take it yours already covers that piece of it?
Not really, but I end up having to do it.
Yeah, and I just wanted to give kudos to the, the guys on the department, it uh, I don't know if you guys are fully aware of it. But when we had the October thirtieth storm, I was actually away, it uh, and so they all kinda pulled together and.
That, I think, you know, I was out and about, and you could tell it was a major issue, and they, they just did a great job.
Yeah, I would echo that.
As thin as we were and as many calls were coming in, but they were able to respond, and their presence was known. And it, and it was good, and it was good to have them there, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I, based on the reports I got from individuals and from the members, I felt they did a very good job with the, you know, two pieces at the top of the, the chain taken out and stuff, and they, they still managed to pull it together and do a great job. Going with that, um, Form sevens have been submitted, the information for the Form sevens and those of, basically, that's the requirements for. It's the preliminary numbers for declaration of a disaster that's gone in. They're doing some site reviews to some of the major areas, Andrew Scoggan didn't meet his threshold, so, but we're still included in the request for disaster. If the request is granted, um, it's important in the, the interim to set the stage and make sure that we keep our records really good and that we actually, perhaps even, I know my payroll. I usually separate my payroll and so that I can just payroll just for that storm event and things like that. Cause it, if it is approved, what we're eligible for is, um, let's see if I can get the breakdown right. I believe it is seventy-five percent federal, fifteen percent state, and then the ten percent, we end up picking the ten percent. But we give ninety percent of our cost back, uh, which is always nice to have.
Yeah, we got that in that blizzard, that was.
What's that?
We got that in the blizzard.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's kind of a, yeah, kind of a nice little boost, it helps. So hopefully it'll get approved and we'll be able to follow through. One item that did come up from the storm itself is, as we move forward and we change, we change faces. We change how we operate and stuff, one of the things I need to make sure I do is come up with an emergency response flow chart that I present to you guys for your approval and stuff, that's probably the biggest thing when I look at it. I said that a couple of us at the top end were missing and stuff, and we need to, I need to do that flow chart, that algorithm so that it's in place for, for future events and stuff like that, so. I'll get that together and I'll get it back to the board for review and approval. And then the, the final thing was actually the item you said you guys wanted to talk to me about, it uh, our monthly meeting was last Thursday. And the guys that uh, I just, I wanna make sure I say this publicly and on camera, the guys really appreciated you coming over. Guys, when I say guys, it's, it's not men, in regard.
Understood.
Okay. But they really appreciated you uh, coming over and speaking to them, uh, it went miles with them. That you coming and stopping in and checking on us occasionally, that uh, they probably all run and hide, actually.
They call it's opposite.
Then you're here, but they do appreciate the presence, so. But anyways, one of the big things we discussed, and I, I have questions about it too, just in regard to the process, the uh, application review process, the interview process, the department's involvement, and my involvement. Then how you wanna handle the department's involvement, cause I can probably go back there and get you twenty people that would be unwilling to be on it. And you don't want that many.
Yeah, well, I think, I wanted to hear, you know, um, you know, your thoughts, uh, cause I think, you know, we have we have, I think, eight, eight or nine applications at this point, it might be more than that. And so, I mean, we, we're gonna talk as a committee a little, um, we're gonna start now, it's like, what we want the interview committee to look like, who we think we should be, who should be on it, what, what level of representation we foresee coming from the department. I've also, um, you know, had a conversation with Rick Emmons, who's on our budget committee, who's also on the Lewiston Fire Department. I didn't promise him anything, but I said, you know, he's, he's interested in being on the interview committee if, if we wanna have him.
Who's that?
Uh, Rick Emmons, he's.
He's Lewiston?
He's on the Lewiston Fire Department, uh, lives over on, in Patriot Way neighborhood, and so I thought it would be good, and we talked about this at the, at the meeting at, at the station to have, and I actually think one of your uh, people brought it up, to have some experience outside of our department, but experienced in the firefighting world and EMS world to, you know, be, add another point of view to the committee. Along with, you know, the chief and, and someone or someones uh, from the department. So that, that's really, I wanted to have, start to have that discussion tonight, cause we're, uh, on the schedule, we're talking about I, at least I think identifying who we want to bring in for interview at, by, at our meeting next, you know, two weeks from now. And then starting interviews in, in, in December, so.
Well, I would suggest that, I don't know. The committee, we don't wanna, the committee of fifteen people, nobody is agreeing. So maybe we get a smaller committee that narrows it down, or maybe the selectmen narrow it down, and then we involve them with the interviews. I mean, I, I definitely want, I agree, I want um, the chief and I, I don't know what the best way to represent the department is. If it's one person serves as, besides you, or.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I've actually sat on a couple of interview committees, actually, one of them was recently in the paper, and it, they've gone back out. But I guess the process in both cases has been very similar, where um, there's been councils, not boards. But the councils were never part, completely in their entirety, part of the interview or review committee. They were actually the final people. Most often, any of the committees I've been on, and it, it's gonna come like, I'm talking against Rick, but most of the time, it's not about Rick. Most of the time, anybody that's been present has been a chief adminis- and an administrator for another department or something like that, which, um, usually there's somebody in the area that's willing to, if that's what the board decides, that, you know, it's the chief or deputy chief in another area department, whether it's career or volunteer, that would be willing as well. Not saying you should or shouldn't use Rick, but um, usually any of the firefighters that have been on the committees with me have been members of the department itself. So I guess, my thoughts is, I would love to be part of the.
Committee?
And I know there are many people in the fire service in the state that I don't know at some level or know of. Or even the region for that matter, and the other side of it was my experience, some of the, sometimes when you do resumes. It uh, it makes you, the, the resume makes the individual sound like they, they, they uh, there's no way you should be able to hire that person for the amount of money you're asking in the first place, and when you actually, if you actually know what you're looking at in that particular field, it doesn't amount to bunk sometimes. That's a polite way of saying it.
You mean, three pages of certifications from one-day classes isn't really that important?
I'm assuming it happens in your world all the time.
Through the applicants, and I'm like, really?
People will do, is they don't list the time, but yet if you actually know what you're reading, they've given you three pages of in some cases, it's not all one-day classes, sometimes it's two to four-hour classes, they have given you three pages of. You know, and, and it, it's not just that, I usually know who's been in trouble, who hasn't been in trouble and stuff like that, so. I would love to be part of the committee, but I also think that, I talked about morale on the department, and to me, morale is. The person you were hiring, their most important job as far as I'm concerned is not what you think it is. It's actually maintaining the morale and the membership.
I wouldn't presume, chief, that.
Okay, well then, good.
I wouldn't presume what we know or what we don't know. I mean, I, I definitely foresee you being involved in the process, um, but I wouldn't underestimate the experience on this board and hiring and evaluating applicants.
Yep, but uh, I didn't mean to put it out as an insult to the board, or your knowledge and experience. But there are many things, especially in specific fields, that you can put on paper, that don't amount to.
Yeah, understood, and I, I think you'll play a important role in helping us separate the weak from the trash.
The individual themselves, I, I think it's a critical piece of it to have the department's involvement, and I think it, yeah.
Chief, could you just give us the, the, the bones for say of the committee that you previously just worked on? How they basically set that up in terms of exactly how that transpired? How many members?
For the last one?
Yeah, just, yeah, just a real quick synopsis of.
Probably six of us.
Okay.
But it didn't work, right?
Too internal, yeah, it didn't work.
Well, at least we'll know what not to do, right?
Yeah, it was in the paper, all you gotta do is go to the Brunswick Times, and you can read all about it, it didn't work. There were two internal, I was the only external, and there were three from the municipality itself. So there were six of us on the committee, uh, we also received packets, um, as well as a scoring sheet in regard to, based on the um, job posting that was posted out there, and based on some of their requirements, their intermediate firefighters, two different things like that, we received scoring sheets at years of experience, and we did the scoring sheets. And then, based on the scoring sheets, we met, took our scores and our evaluations of the individuals and their uh, cover letter, and.
Did the scoring sheets happen after an actual interview, or was that part of the screening process?
This was, this was to determine who would be invited in for an interview. And then once we waded through that piece of it, applicants were, and in both cases, that's what we did. Actually, even for the community college, when I've been on theirs, that's what we've done, is we reviewed the applications, it uh, weighed the applications based on score sheets in most cases, um, and then uh.
Do you happen to have, uh, for reference, a copy of that score sheet?
No, but I would hope, I said on the committee just recently that they'd be more than happy to share it with us if we asked.
I don't, I, I, I understand it didn't work, I kinda like to coach up, maybe having somebody with the firefighter background kinda do a little bit of the, the weeding for say.
Agreed, yeah.
Before they get to this point, cause I mean, we can interview individuals, but criteria is.
And our assignment was, I, we called in a certain number to interview them in, with the committee, and then the assignment was that we were supposed to pick a certain number, which went before the council.
And did the council do interviews as well?
I, I know what I read in the paper, so anybody that read the Brunswick Times knows as much as I do.
It doesn't say much.
It doesn't say why.
They whittled it down to two, but then decided neither one of them had what they were looking for, that's all it says.
Ha, interesting.
They must not have had the applicants that we have.
Six people on the committee, so it was.
That's just how they form.
Yeah, yeah, but I just wanna get, so it was, um, you said two were from the.
Two were from internal, internally from the department, it was, I was the.
You were the external chief.
And then there were, the manager was there, and then there were two other.
Town manager?
And then there were two other department heads as part of the.
Within the town, just like, not necessarily related to fire and safety, but just other department heads?
Well, I guess if you wanna say public safety, yes, one of them was a public safety.
Okay, like fire chief or something, or I mean, police chief or something, yeah, okay, alright.
I think that's what we should do, is have a, a committee that, you know, probably two of us, the chief, one or two member, other members of the department, and then someone from outside.
Yeah, agreed.
And so it'd be five or six people.
Two board members, the chief, what else did you say? So, so someone.
At least one other member of our fire department.
Yep.
Or maybe two, and then someone from an outside.
Wanna limit to six or seven people, I think.
Outside departments in terms of like a manager?
I don't necessarily think it has to be, I mean, Rick could work, or someone from Topson, well, there's no chief in Topson, but. But somebody, you know, anybody.
Makes a good point about another chief or more senior, doesn't have to be a chief, but a more senior leader, someone who's been in a leadership role.
I'm not trying to beat on anybody or anything like that, but um, yeah, if you haven't been in.
No, I mean.
Management position.
Yep, it's a different ballgame.
I, I, I know a couple that I'll, I'll ask if they're interested, and if we don't have somebody, then.
Well, I could ask Kenny if there's anyone in Brunswick that would be willing.
If he has time, I think.
So you.
Any number of area chiefs would probably, I, yeah, you could approach pretty much anybody in the area.
I used, I used to.
So you guys wanna maybe get together on recruiting, uh, who, who do you have in?
I was gonna touch base with, I know one guy from Cumberland, or maybe it's actually Falmouth, wherever he's living, and one from Powell.
Okay.
I'll ask if they're interested.
With them, and then I'll go to Brunswick, depending on what you find, how's that sound?
If they're interested, we'll put the name, and then we'll just pick whoever.
Chief, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it sounds reasonable to me, so, um, would the intention be that I should go back to the department and ask them to come up with two individuals?
I was gonna ask you the process for that, what's your recommendation, like, how do we select, do you let the department pick their own, like, two representatives to send to the committee?
Met with them, you know who the individuals that it, that, cause I didn't ask questions, I have an idea who spoke up the most. But I didn't ask questions who spoke up the most, but um, I have an idea who the outspoken individuals were that were concerned about it. You want me to focus on those, or if you want me to go back to the department and say, well, no, I need two names from. I'd give the opportunity to anyone, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I, whoever.
Maybe select one yourself, and then maybe a grand, you know, maybe whoever you're, you know.
I like the idea of the department selecting their two.
Yeah.
Representatives to the. Just put it up for anybody, ask who wants interested, and then if there's more than two, have a vote?
I can have more than two, I, I can assure you of that.
Put the names in a hat and drawer, you can have, let the department. I'll let the members of the department drive it, like, however they, however they wanna decide who the two would be, let them. You know, as soon as there's, assuming there's no violence involved.
When you need the.
Do you want us there when you're doing that? Cage match for the uh.
No, I have an idea that would like the, two names that have probably come to me and expressed interest in being on it. But I have an idea during the process, there were probably.
And it's uh, I, I mean, interest is great, but um, uh, and we certainly want that, but effectiveness is, has to be there too. Like, you know, just because somebody might be interested in being involved, we don't want somebody who's just, whose interest is because they kinda wanna be at the table and, and get first look and listen, we want active, engaged.
There's not free meals to go with this?
Oh, we could talk.
If you wanna bring them.
We have, we have, we have connections for like sandwiches and coffee.
Oh, okay.
We can make a range.
No, I can assure you of that. I'll make sure the recommendations, and I'm pretty sure they would be anyhow, they're gonna be individuals that will be, participate in the process.
Yeah, and I, I just, I guess, my only thing is that I want, I want the, I want, um, I don't, and this is not an argument. I don't want these people appointed by the chief to be on the committee, I want them to pick their own representatives.
The department.
Okay, great, yeah.
Wanted to come across that I tried to, and that's why I'm not setting here, recommending names, so.
Okay, so as far as, as far as timeline, can we, um, can we get the two names from the department by our meeting on the twenty-eighth? I think that, that's two weeks away, can we make that work?
Yeah, will you have word by then?
Yeah, I can have them, do you probably.
So why don't we have, we, we have as a goal at our November twenty-eighth meeting to kinda finalize the committee, and then we'll, and then um, review the calendar, make, you know, Ruth has a good first draft, but are those still the dates we want, or do we need to make adjustments or whatever, so?
I think that's good.
You want me to actually email you?
Get the hammer and chisel on.
Works for Mark.
Twenty-eighth is the closing day for applications as well, isn't it?
Well, that's, it actually says candidate evaluation and finalist selection, I put a closing date. I don't like closing dates, because if somebody comes and decides on November twenty-ninth that, that they, and they're a really good candidate, I mean, you don't wanna go, oh, I'm sorry, I can't.
They thought they might have a job in Topson, so they didn't apply, but then they don't, so maybe.
I mean, I would expect that, that we would need the application for the first round of interviews, cause you certainly, I mean, after the first round of interviews is over, it's.
I'm assuming the sheets would have to be tweaked, you, you asked about the score sheet, so I'm assuming the score sheets would have to be tweaked based on um, ad job description and job posting. That being the case, are you gonna ask the individual for a copy of it electronically, so that? Who's, who's doing the tweaking to it, the committee, or are you gonna do the tweaking? Cause it really, the, the score sheets, the initial score sheets, not the interview questions, were based upon, and actually, even the interview questions to some extent, were based upon the job posting and the job required. were based upon the job posting and the job requirements, which what we put out for this position are not exactly.
Can you get the ones from Topson and we'll start with that?
Yep, and that's why I was asking if you were gonna share, is it an electronic copy or if I wanted?
Yeah, if, if we, if somehow, if you got electronic copy and maybe we, we take a first pass at tweaks based upon what's obvious from the job description and then send it out to the board members, um, you know, and the chief as well for input on where we think maybe changes been made. And we can, um, discuss and finalize that on the twenty eighth as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Deal. And, and then also map out the process in terms of, okay, this committee is going to, you know, review the, the packets and come back with X number of, you know, candidates that they think, you know, should be interviewed and then, you know, then we'll go from there. We'll just kinda lay it out.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, that was all I had on my list. The only thing that's not on my list that I just wanna make sure you guys are aware of is December first is the date I go out for, uh, the surgery. So, uh, I will be out for two weeks after that.
Okay.
Uh, I'll be around and holler at me asking questions, but I'm really not supposed to go in.
Will you be able to work on your budget from home?
Perhaps, we'll see.
Well, they just, they just showed.
I know, I'm just, he's handling nothing, right?
On the big storm, they just showed they didn't need you anyway, right?
Yep, yeah, they did. They're all set.
We don't want him, we don't want him working on his budget if he's under the influence of painkilling narcotics.
Might know better.
Yeah, alright, alright, thanks, chief.
Good luck with that.
Thank you. Okay, town administrator.
Calvin can go first, cause I'm here no matter what. I know he's not on the list, but he says he wants something from you guys.
He wants something.
Just hit us, man, just, alright, come on up, Calvin.
Alright, so.
Eight till eight thirty, you pretty much get whatever you ask for. Depends on the time for the things we ask.
Just as quick, I wanted to blend up Allstate's finished shoulders on Cedar Pond, Stackpole and Bowie Hill, those are complete. Uh, Crookah finished paving on Bowie Hill, that's all done.
What about, when the folks were here from, um, Country Lane earlier, they talked about the transition from, uh, Cedar Pond to Country Lane was like a mess. What, do, do you have, do you know what they were referring to and? One of the gentlemen said he had to go fix it himself. I mean, what, what was that all about?
I hadn't go.
I thought he was fixing a pond.
I hadn't go.
He was, um, the transit, I think originally the transition, and Calvin knew, cause he and I've had discussions about it. Um, the transition originally, um, there was probably a three inch, three, two to three, yeah, somewhere in there. Differential from when they did the saw cut per se from where the two merge, um, and they have gone back since, um, originally laying that road and filled that in with some, um, probably, it, it seems fine to me. I dropped, I, I didn't see, um, you know, while, uh, Allstate you said is done, I just, while I gotcha, you know, we've talked about that too before, that, that dip down by the end of Cedar Pond, are they going to fix that? Cause that just seems.
Discussed it and, uh, have it, have it do that and it'll probably be spring before we can get to it, but patch it somehow, uh.
We'll patch it or they'll patch it?
Well, they'll, they'll patch it somehow, but they'll come up with a solution, but I, I.
Yeah, I'm just always concerned, cause you kinda bring up like they don't, they don't like to get after the punch list, for lack of better words.
I know, I think they're having some growing pains and I don't think they really, they don't have the local.
For sure.
Crookah has the, they've got a whole crew that just goes out and cleans up the little stuff like this.
Right.
Whereas I think they need to hire a local company to do it and of course, if they do, that's a paving company that's got their own customer base and they don't wanna. So there's some issues that we've had some discussions about, but they said they're working through that, so.
Okay, that's fine. I just, just out of curiosity, cause I, we've probably already paid them, but just how do we hold their feet per se to the fire to make sure those punch lists get done in the future? You know, that they don't get forgot, forgotten about.
They'll, they'll, they'll take care of it. I, Sean was out of town and there was some communication overlap.
Do we hold retainers?
Do we have a retainer or anything?
Two percent until.
No, no.
A warranty period or anything?
I just, that, that's my concern. It's always a concern paying a contractor in full when you have an outstanding punch list, whether it's a road, it's a house, or it's a, because the chances of them, oh, we're just too busy and then it never gets done and that's.
Yeah.
So that's something we should look at in future contracts.
Yeah, we should, we should hold two percent until final completion, basically.
Cause that's a, that's, that rough, it seems like it's grown. It's a brand new road.
You're gonna have to just keep calling them, till they get tired of hearing from you.
I don't know what they did, but it's almost like they, it dips like a, it's, it's pretty significant. If you drive it, you, you'll feel it when you. Yeah, it's almost right, um, the first house on the left right there that was, um, right on the corner of Cedar Pond. If you're on like basically right past his driveway on that side of the road, um, so you're traveling towards Route Nine on the, on the right side. It's kinda sloped just like this.
Yeah.
Almost like a ramp.
I know.
Which I, I still don't know how that happened, because the screed should've gone shoulder to the center line, so I, I still baffled how that happened, but, and no one seemed to have an answer, but.
Oh, well.
You keep calling, they'll have an answer, cause they'll get tired of hearing from you.
I'm sure that they, I'm sure they'll take care. I've talked to Sean about it since he's been back, he says they will definitely take care of it, so, uh, we will, I mean, trying to figure out how to make that happen without looking like a patch in a new road, so.
I think there's a way of doing that, but.
Well. We're gonna try, uh, so, um.
Patches, patch.
So. Storm damage, uh, that's gonna take us weeks to clean that all up. Um, and we had to do winter sand and we had, so we started and then we had to take off. So I will keep track of that time separately for the EMA, and if we do get something back, that'll be great. If not, well, at least, you know, we'll, we'll keep track of what we have for hours involved for that specifically. Um, I've been working with, uh, on the roads for the list eleven point eight miles, uh, in the rebuild category and good news is.
We're up to eleven point eight now, it's growing, huh?
Um, good news is.
Until next week.
Yeah, based on, based on using the numbers that, uh, we've used for this year, uh, cut that number down about fifty percent in cost, so I'm down more in the three million range, so, um, getting actual figures that I've been out working on, actually getting figures from contractors, it's, looks like using similar, um, processes that we did on Runaround Pond, Bowie Hill, Rabbit Road, that they would be significantly lower than the cost per foot, just using a generic number, so.
When you say similar processes, what do you, what do you mean?
Injections, injections, fold up reclamation's in place, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, you know, and using our current numbers that we're getting for asphalt and.
How are you deciding what's a rebuild? Are you using the RSMS?
Just looking at the roads, if the, if, if it's, if it's, if it's gone, I mean, there's, yeah, I mean, they're, they're pretty obvious when you go, when you go and look at it. RSMS doesn't tell you what the road needs, it just, it just more or less gives you maps and.
Well, it's a condition survey and you keep track of it and update it and it'll spit out the reports for you.
Well.
And if you need some help learning how to use that tool, the, the guys from Allstate have offered that help, but I don't, I, I, we need more than, well, that looks like a whatever road to me. I mean, we, we need to have some.
We're gonna go to the town.
Rigor behind this project.
And I, and I, and I, I go out with the experts and look at them, engineers and then the contractors, I do this every day and, and my years of experience and theirs and, and I've talked to, uh, I've talked to, uh, Jerry Douglas from Allstate's with the RSMS and he said this product doesn't do that. It, it doesn't tell you what to do to the road. It's more of, it's more of just an accounting tool. It prints out maps.
Right, it doesn't tell you the fix, but it tells you the condition.
Right.
You decide how to fix it.
Right, so.
But, we're just saying if we're going to town meeting and saying, hey, you guys wanna spend three and a half million dollars on a bond, Calvin said the road didn't look good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They might want some more info.
I, I would, I would.
No offense, I mean, I agree with you, I know it's eleven point eight miles.
I think we need to put it, I think we need to use this, uh, this one, this road needs ditching for a reason. This road needs, it's rutting.
I've started, I've started converting that data from the spreadsheet over to RSMS and we'll be working on that, uh.
So you do have a spreadsheet then?
Yeah, and, and as, and I, and I even met with Jerry Douglas and he said, that's not gonna tell you what to do for the road. I mean, we, we, we all know that's a rebuild, so you just, you gotta take it, it's more of an accounting tool of, it's, it's more.
That'll help, that'll help us at the town meeting say this.
Yeah.
You know, like, like Rob said, we know, you know, but that ain't gonna please them, so if we've got this tool that's there, that, at least we got something.
Well, I, I go over them with the contractor and then I go over them with the engineer. We just, we come up with, this is definitely, uh, an injection candidate or if it's got boulders coming up, so we've gotta box cut this piece. I mean, I'm not gonna put a cement injection in or asphalt injection in something that's got boulders. Like Country Lane has got, we dig rocks out of the road, so I don't know what that was built with, but I think they pushed a stone wall in the middle and, uh, where the pin was supposed to be, they built the road over it, so, um, but we will, uh, I'll be working on that. But based on the numbers we have, um, been using, uh, that cost has come down significantly, so.
What, why, why? What's?
Well, using.
What's, what's different?
Different is, um.
Asphalt's good.
Asphalt prices are way down. Using a generic hundred dollar per foot price is, got us up way up there.
So are you, are you, are you saying you can do eleven and a half miles of road for three something million dollars?
Well, today it was up to eight point nine miles.
Rebuilds.
Yeah, 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 um, so I mean, it's far better off, we're far better off than what I had thought.
Well, that's, there's a difference. I mean, generally a grind, which is what we're talking, grinding and inject and maybe adding some gravel on top and you build the road up, that's, that's not, uh, much more affordable than like a box cut. Like, so if you've got an area over a swamp and you gotta go dig out, over excavate to get the clay and, you know, muck out of there, then build the road. That's usually what's considered full reconstruction.
Okay, okay.
And that's become less and less in this day and age.
It's less common because you don't get much more life out of it versus what would, you know, you might get thirty out of that and we're getting twenty five out of this or whatever it is.
You take the, you take the.
Cost effective.
You take the foot, a foot and a half of material that you do have and you build on that rather than.
Assuming it's good and you do have some material there, sometimes you don't have it.
Yeah, looking at, uh, uh, old Brunswick Road yesterday, there's a section that's, so we're just gonna put a four hundred foot allowance in there for four hundred feet of box cut, because there's a section that's obviously got clay coming up out of it and.
What was, do you remember if Tubby had run around Rabbit, what, was that, what, almost two million or about three miles?
One point one for three point eight.
One point one for three point.
So, you can do the math on eleven point eight.
Well, just round it to two hundred and fifty thousand a mile.
Yeah, and that was injection and building on top of what we had, injection adding material.
It's actually really good pricing.
It is extremely good pricing.
We did the ditching on that.
Yes, extremely good pricing. I mean, compared to what we were getting for pricing where I came from, I was in sticker shock. Up in, you go over in the western Maine where they have no competition, I got, what I could do over here for compared to that.
You know, this word, are you, are you thinking that our, that our crews would, would do the ditching in culverts or, or would they?
Well, using the numbers that I've just given you, that would be the scenario, but.
There's no way our crews could do all that.
That's what I'm wondering, like, from a time perspective, if we wanted an accelerated timetable, that'd be an additional expense, cause we'd have to hire some of that ditching work.
So that's planning, that's my next phase of putting that together, so.
Okay, good, good.
ETTS.
What's that?
ETTS.
It was tradition.
Hire Powell.
So, uh, the other thing, I need, uh, permission from you to hire, uh, Brian Wilson, uh, one of our part-time, well, he's been with the department since its conception, uh, is a part-time plow driver, uh, to hire him as a permanent full-time. I need to.
So that's your recommendation?
Oh, to replace, uh, David Kennedy?
So, did you advertise it or is this, you wanna do this as basically an internal promotion?
Yeah.
And how long's he been with the department?
Since we started.
So he's had a full year as a?
Oh, he's got three.
Three years, okay.
As a part-timer?
As a part-timer, and so, so you know what he's capable of?
He's, he's, knows it inside and out, he's been.
Attitude's good.
And you think the camaraderie with the crew will be?
Well, that's certainly much better now that there's been some changes and so now that I think would be a, it would be a very good.
Have you gotten any calls from the sign you've had out front there at all?
Couple, yeah, uh, I've had, well, a few and I, I might change that.
What are we gonna pay him?
I don't know that I can discuss that here, can I?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, no?
I don't think.
Well.
It's gonna be.
It's gonna be public eventually, but we generally don't.
Probably would just leave that.
Yes, until we've decided, then it's, obviously it's gonna be public.
I mean, I have, I mean, if you guys wanna just take a glance at the front page.
Was the pay negotiating or is there a pay for this?
There's a range.
There's a, yeah, there's a range.
Well, we, we have to determine the pay, right?
Do we or is it up to the department head as long as they're within the range?
Make it up to the department head.
We can.
You can read it, just don't say it out loud.
You're a pretty tricky guy.
I never get when something's public, what's public.
I know, I.
I know, it's hard.
Well, it's public, but you don't wanna broadcast it, make someone come and ask for an RFI or, you know.
How close is this to what he's been getting?
A dollar more.
That was kinda my question. He's gonna get a little bit of an increase and he'll be made full-time and he'll have benefits.
Yep, yeah.
So, that sounds good to me. We've got someone that we can bring on board.
So moved.
Motion by Rich, second by Mark.
Start, start signing it from there?
Oh, in favor?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Let's get away.
Thank you for doing your job as my chairman to nudge me when I'm, uh, okay.
Came up with.
Anything else, Calvin?
So moved, uh, so moved.
When do you think, um.
Want me to redo it?
You might have a, uh, a draft of.
Exactly what it needs to be.
The, the roads and like what, you know, what your recommendation is and what our, RSMS or whatever is saying and, you know.
Sign that?
Some prioritization.
Okay.
Right. When, when do you think, when do you think we'd be able to start actually looking, not a final by any means, but I, start to see.
The ballpark.
Yeah, where, where we're.
I mean, I have the spreadsheet that, that will tell you the roads that are in the rebuild category.
Send that to us. I mean.
Is it the same one that we've had for?
Yeah, I've tweaked it a little bit.
Okay, alright.
I mean, I've changed, uh.
I don't think I've seen it, but what would be helpful too is even, you know, we got eleven miles of rebuild.
Eleven point eight.
But there needs to be a priority. I mean, Country Lane is obviously one of the worst shape, but again, there's not, not a lot of vehicle miles traveled on that road.
Right.
And so we need to justify, okay, Davis Roads first, Country Lane second, you know, I, I don't know what it would be.
Right, that's, that's what I'm looking forward to.
But that's, that's where it's helpful. That's, you know, maybe RSMS isn't the answer, but it's like, okay, we gotta, oh, it's speed limits, the other one. Your higher speed limit roads need to be in better conditions, you know, twenty-five mile an hour speed limits, as soon as you pave the road, people complain that everyone's speeding.
Right, right.
But, um, so those kinds of things, you know, if it was just broken down as a list, it's like, you know, why, why this one's where it's at, that's all.
Yep, um.
And maybe they're a bunch, maybe these four are our first four and these.
So my plan for next year was and has been, well, it was for this year and they can get done, but, uh, would be Davis and Charla were next, uh, but I mean, I think with the numbers I'm getting, if you could do all of Brunswick and.
How about finishing there Bowie Hill?
Yeah, I think Bowie Hill's, it's, it's, the, the middle section, um, is, uh, I don't have my spreadsheet right here, but I, that's in far better shape than some of the other ones that I think we need to get to.
I think for us to start running some timetable and bonding scenarios with, the first thing we need is that prioritized list. So that we can start, say, okay, if we wanted to do this in two years or three years or whatever, you know, what is, what does it look like? What are our bonding options? Um, and what does that translate into a potential tax impact? And then bring options to.
To the tax. If we're gonna have different scenarios like that and squeeze the timeframe down, we probably wanna have in there whatever extra we'd have to hire to do some of the ditching that we wouldn't be able to do in that timeframe.
Yeah, you have to account for that in a, in a, in a tight timeframe, okay, that means we'd have to pay for external resources for some of the ditching and so, yeah, that all has to be part of it too. Okay?
If you, uh, if you give my stop to. To rumble strips?
I do, uh, uh, rumble strips, if you were doing fifty-five, sixty, I mean, I guess it would, it would work if somebody just didn't realize the stop sign was there.
We'll see if they're rolling up to the stop sign, it's not gonna rumble.
The only time that would be effective is if somebody didn't know it was there at all, like these people.
But it's too late.
Well, you're saying them three hundred feet back.
Grab their attention before they hit that stop sign ahead.
I just wonder.
Like they do at the toll booth or whatever.
I just wonder if people wouldn't know what it was for. They may feel the rumble, but wonder what's that mean?
It's good off your cell phone.
Slow down.
So moved.
I don't know.
I've never heard it done on the rural road.
I, I never have.
Look at Main Street in Brunswick, you're doing it.
Those humps, yeah.
What the heck is that?
You gotta have those humps, man. I've seen people get that.
That's because they have crosswalks, though, so it's specific. I don't know if you could do um horizontal rumble strips and not have the plow tear it up, that's the thing.
Do it on the jump.
I've never seen, never seen.
Yeah, I don't know what they do out there, cement.
I mean, we 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 just moved the sign back after. Didn't, it it was not in line with the rest of them, so I called DOT and discussed, let them put them and they moved that back.
Yeah, I saw that thing soon.
We still have an accident, so.
Ultimately, you know, we can do tons of things, but ultimately, it's gonna be the responsibility of the driver. That got the license, that knew that they're not supposed to be driving down the road, eating a pizza, smoking a cigarette, talking on the cell phone and trying to steer. I've seen it happen honestly up on Sunday Street in Auburn, just like that happened.
But the thing is, is people. The accidents that we're having primarily are people that are just failing to negotiate the takeoff. They're looking one way and the other, it's not that they're not stopping, it's that they, when they go to take off, they're, that's my understanding is that that's. It, what I know that's just didn't realize the stop sign was there.
Most people are saying, half the time they're seeing people just drive right through the stop sign.
See, I I don't.
And for the state to put stop signs on all four corners, you're gonna have all four of them trying to blow through that stop sign.
Up on uh one twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's gonna help anything at all, I think it's gonna make it worse. These guys will be over there stationed there.
Oh, I got a uh rude awakening in the storm there that uh people called and wanted me to fix the light, the blinking light. And I said, they mean want me to fix it, DOT called me, I was like, why my light? They called back and said it is your light, so apparently we own that one traffic light in town, and so.
Nobody picks it when there's no power.
Uh they wanted, it it had dropped uh below the thirteen six, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How did it drop?
It's pretty wild over there.
So anyway, I ended up getting it, I ended up getting DOT to do it, but between DOT and CMP, they pulled something off. But just so you know, we own that light, so. So if something happens.
We gotta do something at the intersection.
Okay.
Yeah, well, so.
Thanks Calvin.
People need to be responsible, just can't babysit them all the time.
Alright, what else we got, now we got Ruth's report.
Me, alright, so I have two things, the first one I'll go through is office renovations really quick, I'll try to make this painless. So if you look at the conference room, it's not really drawn very well, um but basically um we wouldn't be changing the tables at all. Um cause none of the the ideas that it came up with, I felt were any better than what we have now. So basically, we'd be getting new chairs, um I wanna replace this table and make it look a little prettier. And then we'd get rid of that and the all the metal things, we're gonna get rid of the file cabinet and put a um bookcase over there and get some. Um nicer chairs for the audience, so that's basically everything that would be in done in here.
We'll we'll get new chairs too.
Yeah, you get new chairs, don't worry. Thank you, okay, so the front office, um not much is gonna change at all, um. The only thing that we're gonna change is is that bookcase by Pam's desk by my office um is gonna turn into a copy machine. And that bookcase is gonna go next to the counters, so that's the only thing that we're changing in that office at all. Um my office, I'm gonna get a corner desk, um which gives me more organizational places.
With the overheads.
Everybody's.
To wrap around, yeah.
Wrap around.
Yep.
With overhead storage and um a tack board, so I can tack all my stuff up. Cause if it's not in front of me, I forget it's there, um and then the file cabinets and a bookcase. So basically, the only thing that that's new that's going into my office is the desk.
And that desk can go either way, cause that was one of my concerns, we don't wanna get a desk that's specific to Ruth. Cause if she leaves us in the next twenty-five years, we need to be able to have somebody put it where they want it, so.
Um so then in office two, we would take all of the um files out of office two. And we would put in a complete wraparound desk, so that would give a lot of space for the code enforcement officer. And space um for the assessor when she's there, um she would have an overhead bin. So she can take her stuff and put it in the overhead bin when she leaves, and so it'll just be safe for her and nobody is gonna mess with it. And then the files are gonna go into the storage room, I don't know how many of you have actually been in the storage room recently, but you know, when we had no power, I was a little bored. So I went in there and I did some organizing, so the map file is gonna move to the center of the room. All of the files are gonna go against the wall um next to the code enforcement officers. And the, there's gonna be a supply storage cabinet, so that's the only things doing in there. And then in the kitchen, because the copy machine is gonna be now in the front office with uh Pam and Shannon. Uh we're gonna have room for a little table and two chairs so that we can actually sit down and have a break and we don't have to eat at our desks.
In view of everybody.
In view of everybody, yeah, um so that along with painting and uh we were going to redo the carpets. Um cause our carpet's in pretty sad shape, so all of the furniture looks like it's gonna be around twelve thousand to twenty-five, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Um the carpet is estimated about thirty-five hundred. And then Rob and I had discussed the possibility of asking people in the town, like the public works department and my department. Cause I can paint and um the fire department to come and work here to paint and we would pay them for it. And then, of course, we buy paint.
Just hire a painter for painting people.
We could, I'm just saying if we've got our own crews and we're, this office is closed Wednesdays anyway. If they wanted an opportunity for some overtime, rather than going out of the house, come in Wednesday and get this done.
That's, I don't know, there's a little, it's not a huge strip to paint, but there's a little bit, if you don't, paint rolls things right, you get a lot of lines.
Yeah. So furniture, carpet. Now, does this take care of the, sorry, go ahead.
Ruth and I talked about the carpet, she's talking about squares, I'm not sure I like squares. From my experiences, they don't, I know you can, but from my experience with them, is they tend to peel corners and then you get trip.
They seem to be working pretty well, like in it.
Yeah, you can still glue down.
Not stick downs, it might make a difference, yes.
Are we talking rug or are we talking VCT, what do we talk?
Carpet.
Carpet, like carpet tiles instead of raw, so that when you, when you have a wear zone, you just put new squares in, you don't.
But she was talking stick downs, right?
It's 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 a.
Could use glue.
Okay, if it's glued, if it's glued down, I don't have so much problem with that, I, the stick downs just don't cut it.
As long as you're not the one ripping it up, you don't have a problem.
But still, I I would, I don't think stick downs, but those glue downs would be fine, that's my thought, I don't know.
Yeah, I.
I just say put a nice heavy-duty commercial-grade carpet in there and have it cleaned once every six months.
Yeah, I that's works for me too, I I said the same thing, yeah, just really have a carpet put in.
Whatever, whatever they want.
And they don't all have to be the same color if that's, if that's an issue, I don't care about that.
So all the pricing for the furniture and chairs and stuff is based on state purchasing? They put out a general bid for office furniture and so forth and creative office get, got that bid. So it's already been, so uh this is how I purchase stuff through the district all the time and she sends the price guide and you can, I've been, gone to the state before. And actually checked and made sure that it was.
Okay.
The pricing, it's all public, so it's already been competitively looked at and everything that she quoted was on the state bid.
Does that include like carpet too, is that part of it?
The carpet would be separate, but that'll be under five thousand, so I told Ruth to just get some quotes.
Yeah.
And we'll get some competitive, cause they're gonna have to lift desks, move carpet, whatever.
Right.
Painting will do the same thing, we'll get some prices and competitive price, and I don't think we have to RFP it, it just, cause it should be. And then the only other thing would be the odds and ends and if we have some money left over, would we do the uh the tile as well? Or can we just clean the tile and see what, how it, clean it and re-wax it?
I got a floor guy out of Lewiston, he does VCT, he does all my floors, um he's very reasonable.
You mean cleaning?
Yeah, for VCT, he does four coats of wax, does the baseboard, um.
So have him come give us a price for that, cause that, I mean, it's fine if it's, if it can be revived.
Yes, that's a two, three hundred dollar job. Was there, was there, um wasn't there a security like locking, like you wanted to lock off that part of the office or something, was that part of?
We used to do that, um and there were some issues with that part of the office, but we're we're not gonna do that anymore, we've taken care of the issues.
Shannon's got her pissed off anyway.
Yeah, but she's not gonna pee all the time.
I installed a special lock on the, the thing, it was the biggest concern, the license plate.
So we got sixteen K plus carpet.
Purchased it and I went and installed it on there and now they lock it with a padlock, so that's another barrier, so.
Was that what that was all about?
It was it was that, and I guess at the time, there were a lot of issues with people coming in and sitting at the desks and moving things. It, it was a space issue at the time, but I don't think that it's gonna be such an issue anymore.
Are we taking that, spread that, that accordion curtain down?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Cause that good, cause it's really.
Oh, so you won't have any barrier there at all anymore?
No, that'll be gone.
Okay.
But the other, that lock, that door will lock and obviously that lock we put on that file cabinet, which you can check that out in there.
So if we're talking. What ballpark for painter, what, five grand?
I don't know, this, I don't know.
Um with the whole building or?
Yeah, the the whole building interior.
Uh I'd say with trim and everything, five, six grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want the doors done, maybe a little, maybe even seven. With carpet, so we're around.
Well, I have the thirty thousand for the, that was specifically done as the renovation by the budget committee, so I don't know if they're gonna.
Yeah, well, see, this is what I'm getting at, so if we, if we're like, cause at at some point, Terry Kirk is gonna sit there. And he's gonna ask, you know, about, you know, what what you said we're gonna do, and I think, I think our response, cause he asked it when he, when he was here before.
Yeah.
Our response is gonna be, you know, I think that we basically were able to meet our needs. Of addressing, you know, workspace in the office area and spruce the place up. Not rip out any walls, not put in any windows and do it for like twenty-two thousand instead of thirty.
It's gonna be.
Yeah, or twenty-five instead of thirty.
It'll still be, and she had another six grand for painting.
Five thousand for painting.
So we had thirty-five.
So, alright, so take, yeah, so take the five out, so we'll. So you're gonna save ten grand, approximately. So that's our, that's our soundbite.
And it should spruce everything up and it should.
I mean, painting can be very, you know, obviously, you know, you want the holes filled in the walls, you want the.
Probably should actually have a chair rail across the back of that.
You definitely should have a chair rail behind that. Maybe even wainscot the whole room, what the hell, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Be done with it.
But tho- those are things that we'll have a little extra money when that comes up, if we decide we wanna do it.
Okay, good.
Okay, and the other thing I wanna talk to you guys about is holidays.
Holidays.
Quicker than we would like, um Monday is Christmas, um so I would like to ask that the office be closed on Monday and Tuesday. In observance of the Christmas holiday.
Christmas and the day after Christmas?
That's what I would like to ask.
And what about Wednesday?
Well, we would have Wednesday off because we don't.
Do you wanna be closed for three days?
Well, we don't usually work Wednesday, so yeah.
Do we? I don't know, I don't have a problem.
Be more inclined Friday, Monday.
Rotate Friday, Monday.
Uh no, 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 Friday, Monday, and then Wednesday, then you work Tuesday and then, yeah.
To be honest, Friday is usually, the day before the Christmas holiday is usually a really busy day for us. Because people are coming in and buying um hunting licenses for presents.
I guess, how do you, how do you tell people to close the day after Christmas though, it's not like an official holiday.
Well, people don't do much that day, you know, they've got.
It's my sister-in-law's birthday, she thinks it, she thinks it's off.
Don't do much on Tuesdays?
Tuesday or Wednesday.
What's your town, your town open on Tuesday?
I I get Tuesday off, but they give it.
We're open Tuesday, yeah.
You're open Tuesday?
Is any town closed on that Tuesday?
I don't know that.
I don't know that either, I guess I should have.
Now, if we do something here, does it apply to all the other departments too?
Generally, yeah.
Well, public works.
That beans is doing Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah, they, yeah, they are, yeah.
I I, it's not the Monday and Tuesday, it's the, and then when you tack Wednesday onto it, you get a town hall closed for three business days in a row. That's, that's what I hesitate a little bit about.
Well, so then I guess I should uh, you know, voice the next thing. So th- uh Thursday and Friday are the last days before the the year end. So we close our books um the last day, which this year is that gonna be that Friday. And generally, on the days that we close the books, we close early.
Yes, so that you can get the books.
So that we can get the books closed before we go home.
I don't have no problems with that.
And generally, it's usually about noon or one, so I'd be okay with one.
We're talking the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth?
That would be on the Friday, Friday we would close at one o'clock.
Friday the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, or even, I mean, eleven-thirty, twelve.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't care. Pick a time that works for you.
Like three days in a row is.
Yeah, I mean.
We're in the same week still, right?
Yeah, we are.
What do you think about trading, trading Wednesday for Tuesday?
Yeah, can we do that?
Departments wouldn't have it off, but you guys in the office could.
I'll, you you wanna uh approve that if that's what we wanna do, then that's okay, cause then I can ask.
I was, I mean, I'm not totally opposed to shutting it down either, it's just, I do get.
Yeah, the three-day thing is.
Three days is a lot, that's.
Yeah, if if you was to work Wednesday instead of that, we made sure we posted that, that, you know.
Would anybody come out, so used to being.
Yeah.
Well, I think if you, like a lot of places.
Yeah, but that gives them time to do most stuff.
Post your holiday hours on the door like a month ahead of time, you know, Christmas week, this is our special schedule. Close Monday, Tuesday, open Wednesday, Thursday, closing early on Friday. That's expected, put that out there and put it on the website and put it, you know. Do you think that's a fair compromise? People will still mess it up, cause I showed up, I showed up here on Friday, wondering why nobody else was here.
Well, we all showed up to the last selectus meeting, so I wonder how come you called and you didn't show up?
I know, I know.
Me and Ra- Rich play tag team part of the show.
It's a good time.
It was a development opportunity. We got like thirteen, we went through thirteen agenda items in eight minutes.
I I don't know what you guys feel, I would be more than content with them having Tuesday off with a Wednesday option.
I think so.
I think that's fair.
And then you can, and close on Friday, I still have no issue with that, cause I know what that entails.
So the holiday hours for Christmas week will be Wednesday, Thursday and half-day Friday.
Yeah.
I wouldn't squeak until the very end, in case you guys, I know.
I would get that on a nice.
Yeah.
Paper on the door tomorrow.
Got a nice Christmas tree holiday hours thing I can think, you can just cut the subway on the bottom, looks really nice.
Have Tammy put it on the web.
Oh, yeah, we would, absolutely, we'll, we'll advertise it everywhere, I mean, that's not a big deal. So, so if I bring this back to Shannon and Pam and they go, huh, no, we wanna work Tuesday instead of Wednesday, is that okay too?
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanna work Tuesday, yeah, that's fine.
They wanna do, I I just don't want to be closed three days.
Especially if you're gonna leave early Friday. Or it is in the same week.
Kevin won't be able to register his new cars and stuff he buys for Christmas.
Although it is the end of the month, and there are a lot of car registrations in the month.
Yeah, I would, that's what I needed.
It would just throw a lot, you know, throw some people off. But anybody that comes Tuesday and wants to register something, at least they can, they can read it, they can say, alright, I'll just come in tomorrow.
Ruth, was that it? I I had two questions for you, we've talked about, and I don't know if we need to make like an official, you know, statement about this. We, we wanna look at, um when we looked at, oh, do we need to replace the heating system? And I think we kinda came to the conclusion that nev, we don't think we do and we should, we should look at a maintenance contract.
Before we move into that, yesterday, what was the issue?
Uh so our our heat on this side wasn't working yesterday, so we got Down East to come, um and there's. On the unit, there's a door and the door has a latch.
Magnet switch.
Yes, and the door was not closed, so that's why it didn't work, so Down East came and they found that out.
Pulled the door?
That's all it takes.
That'll be three hundred dollars, please.
Ah, Down East, was it after hours?
No, it was during.
Eighty-five bucks. But it's, it's worth it then going up in that attic. And then, yeah, so anyway, we talk, you know, we should, I don't know, I don't know how we approach it, but I feel we should be on a maintenance contract. With stuff like the heat system, Todd mentioned the generators, you know, things that need periodic maintenance so that we um.
Well, I think if we're not gonna elect, the the system that we have in place now, if we're not gonna elect to replace it right now, probably the best bet. For continuity of service and so forth, in my opinion, would probably just be continue with the gas service provider.
Down East.
Yeah. Has been servicing that.
You can get a maintenance agreement with them.
Yeah, that's what I mean, oh, absolutely, that's why, that's what I'm saying, I think that's probably the best road, if we're gonna go. If we're gonna maintain this current system that we have, they've been the ones working on it. if we're gonna maintain this current system that we have, they've been the ones working on it, it'd probably be the most efficient way to go.
Yeah.
Cause they'll sell you a maintenance agreement, that'll.
Oh, yeah.
More than willing.
But do we need a maintenance, or just a preventative maintenance scheduled?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's all we're talking, it's that regular.
I don't know if we need to sign up for the seven hundred dollar gold package, you can come change your filters three times a year, two service calls after hours or anything, but, just something that they're constantly doing a quarterly on, is what I do on my units, a quarterly is what we call them.
Yeah, should be, yeah.
I stretched it to four months to save money.
That was your cheap man.
Tertiary.
You guys like.
I don't think anybody serviced that thing for ten years.
Well, see, that's, that's the issue right there.
But the beautiful thing is, it's not an oil-burning furnace, so they don't, I mean, other than that filter, there is not a lot to them things. I mean, they don't get, they don't get crotted up like a oil burner.
How about the one at the firehouse? Cause that's been, like, serviced.
It'd probably do, they probably, I bet, it wouldn't be shocking when those guys go over there and mess with it.
Yeah, there's two or three of them that are talented.
You just gotta change the two-by-two, please filter now with that.
My wife does that.
So what's the next step on the office thing, a more detailed, um, cost sheet, or do you just need a green light for us to go?
I was thinking the green light, cause at this point.
Of course you are.
We have a month and a half left to go.
As long as, as long as we know that those prices we threw out there for the rug and the painting is within a.
If painting comes back ridiculous, we'll have to talk about it.
Well, I think, we say, you know, you say, yeah, you know, and we've got, you know, we can allot, you know.
I'd put that up.
Call it four or five, you know, thousand for carpet and other five or six for paint, and.
Right. If it's more than that, come back to us, yeah.
Right, other than that.
I don't know if, how much runaround you wanna do, but, uh, the owner of Floor Systems, Rich, he, he's a real good guy, they do a ton of commercial stuff. And they're about the best paying you can buy from search. You can go through the work, but I'm just telling you, he's, Floor Systems has been rich.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's about as reasonable and good as they come, he's a great guy.
I think I've talked to other things in the past, I think he's pretty reasonable.
Yeah, what for commercial stuff, they're really.
Anything else?
Too dark to do a whole lot.
Okay, so that's a motion.
Okay, yeah, so.
So move.
Up to how much, what's the spending limit?
Would you have them at forty-eight thousand?
I had, uh, well, the furniture was twelve-five.
Twelve-five, thirty-five hundred, and then, um, five, uh, five K for.
Give her a little bit of room.
I wanna do five, let's do five on the carpet and like.
Thirteen on the furniture, cause another table will throw it up, fi- you know.
Yeah, thirteen on furniture, five on carpet, um, six on painting, and, um.
What's that bring us up to?
Twenty-four.
Let's see if we can squeeze it down, but we want nice chairs.
Okay, nice chairs.
Yep.
So, up to twenty, we'll say up to twenty-six, we know we're covered there, cause that's what we had.
Six, up to.
Up to the thirty?
Twenty-four, I, I just, within twenty-five hundred bucks, how about within twenty-five hundred of the twenty-four thousand?
If it's, if it, if we bring this project in at twenty-five grand, including the painting, then we're coming, we're gonna be ten grand on the budget. Cause we had thirty for the work and five for paint.
Okay, so let's try to get it at twenty-five, anything more than twenty-five, come back to us.
I, I'm pretty cheap, so.
I know, I gave her plans and said, do this, this, and this, she comes back with like a third of it, I'm like.
Are you gonna change the paint color?
Oh, yeah.
Not blue?
Oh, that makes me a little nervous, how enthusiastic she got with that.
Something more warmer.
Well, this is what, what Rob's, um, suggestion was.
That's a color board that I had done for our offices.
Which, which one is he suggesting?
By Herrmann.
Peter Pinkerton.
Well, he, he, I, I liked this for the walls, but Pam doesn't like this for the walls.
And go with that.
One of, one of those two.
So, that, that one for the walls?
And the other one, next one right to it with the trim.
For the trim.
That's what we use for trimming our plant.
Can I do this in my office?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Whatever color you want. Um, well, and I don't know if you consider this at all, but if you change the colors in here, we might need to change those out too.
Well, no, that was the point, we were picking colors.
You're gonna do blue in here?
So. Well, no, we're gonna do green, but the green will go with the dark blue.